Good evening, I call the regular meeting of the Menifee City Council to order. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Denver.
Here.
Councilmember Lees Meyer.
Here.
Councilmember Sobek.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem August.
Here.
And Mayor Mann.
Here.
Five present and none absent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem August, that's got a good ring. All right, on to words of inspiration. Pastor Tony Truax from Hope Christian Church.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members, as we come to a close of another year, a year with some wonderful moments of great prosperity for our city, new businesses, new roads, we've had much growth, and we are reminded of how blessed we really are. We've also had the opportunity to say goodbye to former members, and we even laid to rest a former Mayor Edgerton. There has been great change, and as City Council members, today is a privilege for me to pray for you this evening, for with great change comes great opportunities and great challenges. So let's pray, shall we? Oh Lord, our God, we come to you this evening thankful for a year of great opportunity and change. We recognize, Lord, that it is by your grace and your sovereign blessing that our city has grown, and we pray for your faithfulness and our humility as we continue to do so. Almighty God and Father, we call upon you, having celebrated the Festival of Lights and being reminded that you are the light of the world and our only hope. We call upon you and pray to you for your light to shine and for your spirit to be upon each of our council members as they consider the matters before them this evening, in the days to come, and in the new year. Father, we also come to you with our hearts still weary and stunned since our last meeting. Where here in our inland empire, we have been in international news in the most horrible way. On December 2nd, 2015, 14 people were killed, 22 injured in a terrorist attack, a mass shooting, attempted bombing in our sister city of San Bernardino. And so tonight, we pause for a moment, and we lift them up and pray for your continued comfort to be upon those families and that city. We pray, Lord, for your hedge of protection upon our citizens, our first responders, our businesses, our hospitals, our school, schools, our military and their families, and our city officials. And I pray and ask, oh Lord, that you would grant us your peace, for we are reminded in this season what your word says, "For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulders, and his name shall be called Wonderful Counselor, the Mighty God, the Everlasting Father, the Prince of Peace." You, oh Lord, are our peace, and we thank you in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Madam Clerk, do we have any modifications to the agenda tonight?
Yes, we do. Item number 10-7 is being removed and will be brought back to the January 6, 2016 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Agenda item 10-7 is removed from consent calendar. Are there any modifications? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as posted with modification. On to presentations. City Manager, we have an introduction tonight.
Yes, we do. I'd like to ask, as he's coming forward, Captain Mike Judge, your Menifee Police Chief, for an introduction.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, and City Staff, thank you for the opportunity to say goodbye, and to introduce to you Captain Brandon Ford as the new Chief of Police for the City of Menifee. If you embrace change, however, in the occupation of law enforcement, change is not only inevitable, it is constant. It had always been my intention to be your chief for as long as you would have me. Sadly, for personal reasons, I must retire on the 20th of this month. It has been my privilege and honor to serve you, staff, and most importantly, our community as Police Chief. After working in Menifee for a short period, my wife and I fell in love with the city and quickly decided to make it our home. Yes, that means soon I'll be a resident to be reckoned with. I'm just kidding. As for my staff, never before have I been surrounded by people who better understood the true meaning of public servant. The men and women of the Menifee Police Department fully embrace our community and work tirelessly to keep us safe. Although I always set my expectations high, my staff continually exceeded all of my expectations. I could not be more proud of each and every one of them. So it is with a heavy heart that I must say goodbye to you on December 23rd. Again, thank you for allowing me to serve you and our community. Now for the more important issue. Captain Brandon Ford has been employed with the Riverside Sheriff's Department for approximately 20 years, and has extensive experience working buried assignments within the department to include patrol, special enforcement teams, the Central Homicide Unit, the Banning and Moreno Valley Stations, and, most currently, Professional Standards Bureau. For those unfamiliar with that title, that is Internal Affairs for our department. Captain Ford is very familiar with our valley. He was raised in San Jacinto and currently resides just south of the City of Menifee. As such, Captain Ford is not only experienced, he is very knowledgeable about the City of Menifee and the surrounding communities as a whole. I have the utmost trust in Captain Ford, and I am sure you will be very pleased with his commitment to our community, the City of Menifee, and just as important, his quality of work. It gives me great pleasure to introduce the new Chief of Police for the City of Menifee, Captain Brandon Ford.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to serve as your chief. I am quite honored by it. I would like to publicly thank my predecessor, Mike Judge. He has served the city, the county, the sheriff impeccably, and judging by the loyalty of his troops, he's going to be a very tough act to follow, and I'd like to publicly thank him for leaving me in charge of an incredible police department, incredibly professional group of people. I do look forward to serving alongside each of those troops, but more importantly, I look forward to serving alongside each of you, for each of you, and most importantly, for the fine citizens of this community. Menifee is a young, vibrant, growing community, and I couldn't be happier to be a part of it. Like Mike said, my family and I live very close and are just absolutely honored for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Johnson, does that conclude? Do we have something that we would like to ...
We do, actually.
I think Captain Judge needs to come back into the chamber.
Captain Judge needs to actually, yes. Thank you. Want to join me up front, Council?
Yeah, let's join up. Can't get away that fast.
He's trying to make me cry. It's not pretty when I cry.
Come on up, sir. In center, as they say. That's me, Mr. Denver and Ms. Sobek. So, skullduggery is going on in City Hall tonight, because the only way to get Captain Judge here tonight was to put an introduction to Captain Ford on the agenda. Isn't that pretty cool? That's how humble of a guy he is. The City of Menifee has had many successes, and one of its many successes is being the recipient of good fortune, sir, of you being named our Police Chief, and you have a great task as the Chief of Paris in Menifee, Canyon Lake, and some unincorporated territory. Captain Judge is one of the most humble guys I've known, and if you've done any business with him or dealt with him, you know that that is true. Hence his immediate departure from the lectern when he got done introducing Captain Ford. So, on behalf of the City Council, we do have a presentation for you, sir. On behalf of the City Council, the City Staff, and all of the residents of Menifee, all 85,000 of them plus, I'd like to read this. It says, "Congratulations on your retirement, City of Menifee Police Chief, Retired Captain Mike Judge. With great honor and recognition for your commendable dedication and service to the City of Menifee, may your next adventure be long and fulfilling, December 16, 2015." Congratulations, sir. It is not a low. It may be. Would any of my colleagues like to share anything? I knew Greg would.
Just want to say that I come from a long line of family firefighters, and I was never too comfortable with the place of the cops and so on and so forth, until I met Captain Judge. And I work a lot more with police officers now than I did in the past, and I want to say that Captain Judge got really tired of me calling up and saying, "We had a homeless person in the shopping center the other day." And he'd kind of write me back like, "I think we have more serious problems, Mr. August, than that." And so, but he was always very, very good about getting back to me, and as well as all his other officers, and it's been a real pleasure working with you, sir, and with your other police officers, and I want to thank you for everything you've done for the people in I District and the people of the city. Thank you.
Anyone else like to share? Okay. City Manager, Rob Johnson.
Thank you. Well, congratulations. You've been telling me this is coming for a long time. No, I'm just kidding. Actually, I was very surprised. Actually, Captain Judge came on and when we had a little bit of a changeover from kind of some kind of hands-off, I think, and when you came in and it was all hands-on, and we appreciated that. We worked hand-in-hand on budget items, we've worked hand-in-hand on traffic detail, we've worked hand-in-hand with any number of different call-outs and emergencies, and we appreciate that. Your response to us has been amazing, and we're going to miss you.
So, earlier this year, we had an opportunity, you know, we had a January update for the city, and then we do the state-of-the-city thing in June, and Captain Judge was part of a panel, and after he gave his presentation about keeping us safe and the good metrics that his team at the Paris Station and everybody who's on the street have achieved, I made the stupid quip of, "Maybe you'll get promoted one day." And he looked at me, goes, "That's not happening." So apparently, we knew that that may be something that was coming down. Now, we said goodbye to City Clerk Kathy Bennett last month, and during her farewell, Captain Judge, we were all over here across the parking lot at one of our businesses, the Mason Jar Brewery, and we had a great event. And Captain Judge goes, "You know, Mayor, I don't have a Navy coin." And so, incident to your retirement, Captain Judge, this is a personal presentation for me, "I am going to give you your first United States Navy coin, sir. There you go." It's, and it says, "United States Navy Retired," which coincides with what, you know, you're doing right now. So, not to be outdone, he wanted one coin, but I'm going to give him another. This particular coin, because I was enlisted and I was officer both, I'd like to present you with a Senior Chief Petty Officer of the United States Navy coin, so that you have two, not just one, okay? It's pretty cool, right? You're in the chief's mess now, okay? Now, not to be outdone, because I was an officer, you know, I got another presento here for you, because I held a couple of different ranks. I'm going to present to you a U.S. Navy Commander coin as well, because I held both ranks, Senior Chief and Commander. So there you go, Mike. Really appreciate your service. You asked for one coin, you got three. That's how we roll in Menifee. And in appreciation for everything that you've done, you were our third Police Chief, Captain McElvein, Captain Williams, Captain Judge, I think you improved morale at the station. You've done a miraculous job and turned things around and reduced crime with your new approach to community-oriented police, and maybe restoring it to what it was, and we're very, very grateful. On behalf of all of us here in the room and everybody who's not here, we wish you the very best in your next adventure in life. Thank you very much.
You've got to all snuggle up here. She's poking out there for 20 minutes.
I'm coming.
Can you stretch it when you touch it?
Those are the fun things that you get to do when you're on the City Council and recognize great leaders and people who do things good in the community. We'll miss you, Captain Judge, and Brandon Ford, we look forward to your leadership as well, and we look forward to what you're going to do for us and on all the communities that you currently lead. On to public comment. Madam Clerk, would you please call the first speaker?
Katie Munir.
Tonight, I want to ask Rob Johnson if he has a degree, a PhD, in microbiology, or chemistry, or any of those things, or if we have anybody on staff that does, just so when I come with some documents, we'll have some experts in the field that can review them, and will know what's going on and be aware of it. I had hoped to have some contact from Dr. David Lewis, and I haven't been able to do that. He's been in some pretty involved things lately. So, when I do, I'll be back in contact with you. And on that note, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I will see you after the new year.
Thank you, Ms. Munir. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers.
Very well. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Councilmember updates and comments. Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll go first. I know there's some comments other councilmembers want to make tonight, but Saturday night, I believe we had our, Sunday night, was it Sunday night, Mr. Mayor, we had our first menorah lighting?
Sunday was, yeah.
Sunday. Saturday was the Christmas tree lighting. It was the first time I'd been to an experience. It was well-attended by the supervisors, Ashley and Washington, Mr. Washington. There were many, many other people there. It was well-attended. Mr. Rosen and people from the Parks Commission were there. I even got to light a candle. I do want to give a special thanks to Mayor Mann for giving a very poignant reading from the old testimony, and I still can't figure out how you got that out of your mouth like that. I don't know how you did that, but it was very, very good. So, it's the first of many. I hope all of you get a chance to attend the one we have next year. So, it was very nice, Mr. Rosen, and it was a pleasure for all of us to be there.
Thank you, Mr. August. Are there other, Councilwoman Sobek?
Thank you. I just, my first couple of weeks as a councilwoman has been a little bit busy, and I just want to say that we have a wonderful city. I attended the Town Hall meeting on December 3rd in Councilmember August's district about homeless. It was very, very informative, and I think a lot of good information was given to our senior community over in District 1. Are you going to talk about Spirit Park, since that's your district?
Certainly.
Okay, you do that. Last Friday, we attended, I attended the MetroLink grand opening, and the mayor was there, and some other councilmembers, and what a benefit that is going to be for our city, that we are going to have a train right on North Menifee, and we'll be able to take the train into Orange County, LA, Riverside. It's supposed to take, what, 40,000 trips off the highway a day? And so, it's going to be a great benefit to our city. The tree lighting, December 12th, our second annual tree lighting, our staff, Robert Lennox, you and your staff, did a great job. This year, the parking was so much easier. The mayor gave a nice speech, and we had a special visit from Santa, Mrs. Claus, that came on our city fire trucks. Cal Fire did a great job, and we had a good-looking Santa, Mrs. Claus. December 11th, also that evening, I had the privilege to attend Paloma Valley High School Naval NJ ROTC performance. We had 250 youth performing and showing their ROTC performances, and getting passed off and getting their ranks. And it just, what a wonderful opportunity it was to see these youth. That is the, at Paloma High School, it's the third-largest cadet program in the county, and it was just, if you ever have the opportunity to go, but make sure you wear warm clothes, because it was a freezing night. The other night, I wanted to end on this one event that I attended. I never had heard of it before. It was called, it's called the Blue Light Ceremony, put on by Riverside County Sheriff's Department. If you haven't heard of it and you aren't aware of it, they do this once a year where they honor all of the fallen police officers from Riverside County, from the beginning when Riverside was first established. And they mention the names, and they show the pictures of each of these fallen officers. And as they were reading the officers, and I looked at the list, there was one man on there that I knew, Mark Kemp, who lived in the City of Menifee. And before we were a city, he was an officer, who had an asthma attack out on duty, ended up dying in the emergency room. And I knew his wife and his three children, and so it was really touching to go to this ceremony. I brought back for each of the councilmembers a blue light. You can have one and pass it down. They turned off the lights, and they had us all snap our little glow sticks that turned blue. And it was just a really touching ceremony. I feel we are very blessed to live in a country where we have such wonderful first responders who look out for all of us. And I don't know, maybe down the road, we might want to have something at City Hall to recognize our police and fire, and I don't know, even military that may have fallen, I don't know, just something to think about, since I saw that name, Mark Kemp, on there. Just would not ever want to forget anybody from our city. So that was a really touching, touching event. And then I just, two things to be able to put on the agenda for next time, or do we do that at the end?
Do that at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Denver.
Well, Santa Claus has been a lot of places here in Menifee this last two weeks, and the one that I don't know if you guys know about is on Saturday, December 12th, 11:45 to 2, was Shop with a Cop. It's a really great thing that's done, believe it or not, at the Paris Airport, and I don't know how many cops there are there, but there must be 30 or 50. It's just a bunch. Each of them have a car. Each of them takes a kid that's on, that's in a, not a welfare program, but where your parents, what's that called? What's it called, when your parents aren't home and you ...
Foster?
Foster, foster kids. And they take them, and there's a certain amount of money, I don't know the number, and they take them down and give them, let them buy a prize for themselves at the store. And a cop does that personally with each child. So if there's 50 kids, there's 50 cops, 50 cars, and they each go with them separately. It's just the most emotional thing. Then they go out to the airport and they eat, pretty good hamburgers and hot dogs, I might add, and meet with Santa Claus, come and sit on his lap, and I'm telling you some of the stories that they told Santa Claus. "Well, what do you want for Christmas?" Santa would say, and most of them said, "Well, I want a toy," or "Look what I got," or all these things, and some of them said, "I really want my dad back." And Santa had no way of asking more. Or one said, "I'd really like a new house." I said, "Oh, a new one?" He says, "Yeah, we got evicted last week." And on, and on, and on. And so, Shop with a Cop, it's a good thing if you ever get to go see it.
Thank you, Mr. Denver. Councilmember Lees Meyer?
Yeah, on December 5th, the City Council and the Parks and Trails Commission opened up one of many of these newest parks, Park 31. It's called Spirit Park on Newport and Berea. It was a great event, and great turnout. What a fantastic day. The weather was awesome. I'm sorry you couldn't be there, Mr. Mayor, but it was a great, great event, and what a great park, great job, Robert, and the rest of the Community Services staff for putting on such a fantastic day. I hope that that park continues to be as full as it was that day, because it was really hopping. It was a great, great event.
Thank you, sir, very much. Back to Mayor Pro Tem.
I just want to chime in and echo some comments by Ms. Sobek, that for as far as the Christmas tree lighting, a great job by Community Service, but also from many people on the staff, Julie Woodruff, Gina Gonzalez, and other people on our staff that participated as well. And Santa Claus was as good as ever. The presents weren't any better than ever, but that was a great job by Mr. and Mrs. Denver as well. RTA on December 31st, starting at 2:00 PM, will be giving free, that's New Year's Eve, in case any of you need to be reminded of that, starting at 2:00 PM, all bus service in the City of Menifee and within the jurisdiction of RTA will be free, up until the end of service for that route. A dial-a-ride won't apply in the city, and hopefully the newspapers, and the people in the back in the newspaper section there can get this out to all the people in the City of Menifee. So if you ever want a free ride on an RTA, December 31st, starting at 2:00 PM, all the way up until 10:00, please jump on, and there'll be no fares charged. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you, and thank you for your representation on RTA on our behalf. I need to report out at the RCTC meeting, the last one of the year, reorganizational meeting, similar to many councils that do that in December. The Riverside County Transportation Commission has a new chairman, and that is Mayor Scott Modas, bless you, Mayor Scott Modas from Desert Hot Springs. And also, I don't know whether you've been paying attention to the newspapers, but in an amazing display of bipartisanship, Congress, the House, the Senate, signed by President Obama, signed a bill, a transportation infrastructure bill, for $325 billion. And this takes care of several pieces of legislation that have been put forth in about 14 years, wraps it all into one, reauthorizes the Federal Highway Trust Fund, and gives public agencies like Menifee the opportunity to seek those funds, as well as the Riverside County Transportation Commission. So that's really exciting. It also reauthorizes funding for safe routes to school and several other things. I, too, attended the MetroLink grand opening and ribbon-cutting and dedication, and what's really exciting about that is that the next phase is the San Jacinto Line, which is probably going to be about 10 years out, but we've already spent several hundreds of thousands of dollars in planning and design of that at the RCTC level with staff, and that's the next leg that's going to go through existing BNSF rail. And this summer, in August, I am going to test it out. I'm going to take it from where Menifee, or where Marietta Road ends, up at Mapes, and where the final ... the final, the train stop is on that line. I'm gonna take it all the way into LA and go to the Adele concert in August. That's what I'm gonna do. Just echo the comments of my colleagues. You know, this is a special time of year. You know, we celebrate our faiths. Some people don't celebrate faith like others and that's okay. That's what makes America great. And in Menifee though, kudos to your staff, Mr. Lennox. Bang-up job over last year. The menorah lighting on Sunday and the tree lighting on Sunday was just, you know, those are things that good communities do. And my hat's off to you and I echo the same comments from my colleagues. We need to keep that up. Unfortunately, last year, I made the mistake of saying that the Krikorian Movie Theater would be open by this year.
Dope.
Right? And I am on record as saying that, but through a series of delays, you know, the free market sometimes slows down a bit and things get in the way. But those things have been eliminated and I expect, I think we expect that that'll be built by, by next December. So hopefully it'll be open by the time the next Star Wars or the next James Bond movie comes out, right? So with that being said, that completes my council member update and comment. Onto the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes. Do we have any modifications to the minutes of December 2nd? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Onto the consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as modified by removing item 10.7?
So, second.
We have a motion, a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem August? Councilmember Leesmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We have no public hearings this evening. Onto discussion items and the first item on, on discussion, 12.1, is really, really exciting. Mr. Johnson, would you take it away?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Gonna ask Gina Gonzalez, senior management analyst from my office, to take you through the presentation of the award of bid and approval of the design bill contract for the construction and outfitting of fire station number seven.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and residents. It is my privilege to present to you item number 12.1, which is CIP 1508, the Design Bill Contract Services for Fire Station Number Seven. This project has been ten years in the making before the city incorporated to replace the existing Sun City Fire Station that was deemed inadequate from a health, safety and operational perspective. The city has made this project alone a priority, especially since it's the ten busiest, tenth busiest station within the nation and first within Riverside County. As you can see from the timeline provided, the city has entered into MOUs with the county to transfer the existing fire facility development impact fee funding to identify the city as a project lead and to assist the city with real estate services. City staff has acquired 2.1 acres of land off Bradley Road, Cherry Hills Boulevard, at the council's direction, and is bringing forward to you today the Design Bill Contract Services for the fire stations, design, construction and outfitting. To give you a brief snapshot of the design build method and why Riverside County Fire Department and city staff has moved forward with this method is that the guaranteed maximum price is identified at the front end of the project and all services are included within that set price. Riverside County Fire Department Strategic Division has moved forward into this new method for construction of all of its future fire stations, as there is a long list of benefits provided on your screen, such as 20% cost savings, an average four months faster for construction, early guaranteed pricing, as we mentioned, lower front-end costs and limited change orders. The design build contractor selection process involved a selection committee that was made up of city staff and Riverside County Fire Strategic Division. Here today, Captain Bill Law, made up of Chief Todd Williams and Dexter Galling. And we established a GMP of $4 million utilizing that fire facility diff funding. An RFQ was released in July and seven firms were shortlisted into that RFP process. In developing the RFP, Riverside County Fire Strategic Division weighed in heavily on the design standards, guidelines and inclusions for this fire station. After all, they're the ones that have to live there 24/7, right? The top three firms who submitted RFPs were interviewed by the selection committee. References were all checked on the firms and ultimately, the design build contractor selected was RIC Construction Company, Inc., based off of the rankings of the committee. RIC Construction Company, Inc., just to give you a little bit of a background, has, and their identified architect, which is STK Architecture, Inc., collectively have over seventy-five years of experience building fire stations, have built nearly 40% of the stations in Riverside County alone and have completed over thirty design build projects. Some of the most notable stations are Eastfield Station Twenty-Seven, Temecula Wolf Creek Station Ninety-two, Lake Elsinore Station Ninety-four and Paris's New Station One-O-One. The selection committee negotiated additional aesthetic improvements with RIC from what was presented within the GMP. Here's a rendering, rendering of the schematic design and please note that the design features could also be altered within the design phase of the project. So some of those aesthetic improvements negotiated were the side, stone siding to the exterior of the structure, which is the facade. The roofing changes into emission-style clay tiles at the top. And then the main entry was increased the height and then additional glazing along the top side. Here's another schematic design. This is the exterior perspective and you can kind of see the clay tiling, the stone facade and then the raised entry. Additionally, here are two site layouts. The first one on the left kind of gives you a bird's eye view of, of what's being laid out. The apparatus bay on the southerly portion of the parcel was placed there to mitigate any heat during the summer months and to become, what is it? The administration building is more, less prone to dealing with the heat that would come on the south, the south side. The expanded site layout on the right kind of gives you a parcel view, showing you that over the 2.1 acres, the actual project only covers about one acre of the entire site, allowing for additional uses for city staff or fire. Here's some additional layouts. The admin living quarters is just about three, thirty-eight hundred square feet. The apparatus bay is almost forty-four hundred square feet for a total of close to eighty-two hundred square feet. The design that Riverside County went with was this two-building structure with a ten-foot breezeway in between. And the admin quarters has a formal entryway along Bradley Road, a lobby, barracks that sleep six, three bathrooms, a captain office, sleeping quarters, a commercial kitchen, day room, fitness room, storage, patio, training room and wait for it, an EOC.
Good.
The apparatus bay features two bays, bi-fold doors in the front, roll-up in the back, a workstation, a turnout room with lockers, hose storage and an EMS room.
Could you explain for the audience what an EOC is? Just the acronym?
Emergency Operations Center.
Thank you.
The station will also be an energy efficient building and will be LEED Silver equivalent with high efficiency HVAC units, solar panels, LED lighting, solar tubes for natural lighting, low glazing and water efficient fixtures. So tonight, the staff is recommending to the council to award the bid to RIC Construction Company, Inc. for the design, construction and outfitting of Fire Station Seven for the amount of the GMP of $4 million, which includes a 10% contractor's contingency of $366,000 and the additional recommendations that are provided on your screen and in addition to the staff report provided to you. And that concludes my presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Are there questions from the council? Mr. August?
Could you go back, please, to the expanded site layout, please? Gina? On the right there. The, what's enclosed in the red, the property south of that, outside the red, up down to Augusta Drive?
Yes.
Is that part of the project? Is that part of city?
That's a medical facility.
That's not city, that's not part of the city's property purchase on this?
No, no, sir. The bottom, no.
So when we, once people see a sign there that that property's for lease, that property is actually for lease, that it goes down to Augusta?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And that, that was a question, if I may follow up. The tria, okay, so where the red border of the fire station property is?
Mm-hmm.
And the medical, the existing medical office facility, the little triangular property at the bottom right?
Mm-hmm.
Who, is that ours or does somebody else own that?
Somebody else owns that.
So have we, have we landlocked? Have we now locked that in? I mean, what possible use could that be, other than maybe whoever owns it expands something there later?
Well, the property that we purchased this from, he did not own that below property at the time.
And is this portion of what we have as a city asset, who, we don't own the rest of that parcel that's on the corner there north of the, the red line?
No, sir.
And that's where the old Kings Inn used to be?
Correct, sir.
So is there a representative from RIC here tonight?
Yes, there is, sir. Project manager, Tony Walker.
So I, I, I'm not asking because we can't direct that. It's just maybe something to explore. As this facility gets built, maybe we could, from a Menifee Historical Society standpoint, as we build this fire station, maybe towards the northern edge of the property, put a placard up there of something that says, you know, the original site of the Kings Inn, because we're, we're embarking upon some historical markers throughout the city. I think it's important for people who still remember that, and there's a lot of people that do. I think that would be important to capture. Perhaps you could work with staff and, and with the historical society and make that happen.
Great.
Yeah. Mr. Denver?
You know, I agree with that. That hotel was the major, was a major place to come. It's when you talk to people about Sun City, California, that's where they came. When it got torn down, it was quite a, an emotional thing for the people in Sun City. They moved that house of the manager of that Kings Inn and they moved it across the freeway, which wasn't there. It was 395. They moved it up and put it on a lot up the hill and I live in it now. So I live in the manager's house of the Kings Inn.
Excellent.
What I meant to say was, is I agree that you ought to put something in there saying that it has to do with the, it's the original place of the Kings Inn.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Gonzalez. Thank you for a great staff report. Thank you very much for bringing us a great product. Madam Clerk, what action do we need on this item tonight?
You can take action on all four recommended, staff's recommendation in one motion.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve staff recommendation as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Leesmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Protem August?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Johnson, is this our first facility construction project in the city?
It's our very first facility construction project, yes.
From our, from our incorporation. We've inherited some assets.
Another first.
This is our very first construction project of a facility. Well done to all. Thank you very much. Looking forward to so many more. Mr. Denver?
Quick question. What's happening with the old fire department? I've heard stories that it was one way and then I've heard another and then I heard back to the first.
Our understanding is the county is gonna maintain control of that facility.
And make it into offices?
Don't know.
Go back to the county asset.
Mr. Denver's a Realtor, that's why. No, I'm just kidding.
The original use was gonna be within the department still, but they're going to...
Podium.
Sorry. Bill Law, Riverside County Fire Department Strategic Planning Division. The original use was gonna stay within the department itself. It's gonna be transferred back over to a county asset now.
Okay, thanks.
Just, just so that you know, I've always been confused on that, those things. A case in Osiero Center and other places were given to the city when the county, when the city became the city. And on the other times, the county keeps things or the fire department keeps things. I never see the logic of those things. I never hear where anybody has a say. Somehow God makes a decision and that's it. But God made a decision, so that's all right with me.
No, the city manager did.
Oh, I see. Same thing.
Exactly. Okay, well done to staff. Thank you all very much. Great job, Gina. And Jeff Wyman, I know you were all involved in the process. Thanks, thanks to you, Mr. Lawler. Appreciate it and everything that you've done. Cap. Onto agenda item 12.2, Parks, Trails, Open Space and Recreation Master Plan. Another first in the city of Menifee. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm gonna turn the balance of the item over to Community Services Director, Robert Lennox.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Mayor, council. This is an exciting evening for us, the Community Services Department and in the city of Menifee. Before we get into the balance of the item, I just want to remind the council on some of the history leading up to this. This has been a twelve-month process and if you ask staff, probably feels like much longer. But to, to recall, even back in October of 2014, this council did approve ordinances to introduce and accept Quimby mitigation ordinances, which essentially codified the determination that all development in the city for subdivisions would require five acres per 1,000 residents of open space, parkland, so that the standard was raised from the previous three acres per thousand. In order for that to be given some teeth though, and to provide a roadmap of how those acreages would manifest themselves in the city, there was a need for a plan. And so we embarked upon that plan effective December 17th of 2014, when this council approved an award to RGM Design Group to conduct a study and ultimately helping the publishing of a plan. With that though, to date, there has been a number of tasks that have been completed, which are outlined in your staff report. And they include everything just short of approval of this council and review of this council of the plan. And this evening, in attendance is Zachary Meeting of RGM Design Group to provide an overview of the plan details, the process and walk you through some of the final steps. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to him and he can walk through it and certainly be able to ask questions along the way or at the end.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Lennox. I think it went by in a blink of an eye. I enjoy this. It is a fun process, particularly when a city that's so dedicated early on to know that they do need a plan. I've seen the opposite as well in my career, cities that have been established for a very long time, get built out and go, oh, we needed a plan. You guys are doing it right. And what we have developed with you, I don't have a remote though, so I'm gonna, oh, perfect. Thank you very much. What we've developed is the Long Range Park and Recreation Master Plan.
It has to work.
Yeah. Let's see there. On button. And I do have computer science degrees and now I, now I can't work a remote.
It might've got turned off.
That's how quickly technology advances on us.
It just got turned off.
Oh, thank you. There we go. As Mr. Lennox had mentioned, this is about a year-long process. The Park and Recreation Master Plan that we've developed is a community-driven Park and Recreation Master Plan. It is a representative process of the community members. It is a guide, a roadmap for the development of the next five, 10, 15 years out, the park and recreation facilities. What I'll go over today is a very brief summary, only about 120 minutes of 362 slides, on the process, existing recreation resources, community participation, all the green elements up there, of our data collection. And then the long yellow element out there of our analysis, the assessment of the data we've collected, how many of what do you need now and in the future? And then the final steps, we'll look at the top facility needs, the distribution of those facilities, recommendations and ultimately, where do you go from here? How do we proceed? Robert did tell me I will be dragged out if I go 120 minutes. We start our process as we do any condition assessment, any facility condition assessment, any park and recreation master plan, is learning the lay of the land. We go out and we look at the existing resources. What is the physical makeup of Menifee? We looked at the, Menifee had eight parks. Spirit Park, as we mentioned earlier, did just open this last week. There are several parks in progress. There is Valleywide Park and Rec... There is a Valleywide Park and Recreation District with 19 parks, and there, they had several parks in progress. You have multiple park types, mini parks to neighborhood parks to community parks, all with different acreages. What you see here on this map is a lot of circles, and it looks kind of like a fallout map. It's not, it's your park and recreation map. It's the first circle on the top, which is supposed to be purple there, is a half-mile radius. Those are the existing park facilities. What you have in green, or yellow on the TV screen here, are the proposed park facilities. And what you can take away from this one map, just as we look at the existing conditions, is there's a lot of parks on the east side. But there, all these parks are within the city boundaries. So when we did the existing conditions review and resources, we toured all of the parks, and we looked at everything inside the city boundaries. Lastly, real quick on this slide, the last circle there, the orange area, those are the underserved areas, the areas that don't have parks within a half-mile walking radius for community. As I had mentioned, we had toured every single facility. We had looked at all of the facility conditions, both from the city parks and the Valleywide parks. And we assessed everything from what type of facilities were there, what type of amenities were there? Did it have benches, did it have barbecues, did it have soccer field? What all those amenities were, and we photo-inventories everything as we went through it. Now, we didn't fly drones, and we didn't fly in a helicopter, we walked. I did take this image here off of the internet. But to give you an idea, we looked at everything. We made sure that as we began the community outreach process, we were able to have a common dialogue with the community members. So we understood what parks they were talking about, when they were explaining their desires. We also looked at the schools, the school districts within the city of Menifee. There are three different districts, and you only see two colors here. The city of Menifee is actually all encompassed by the Paris Union School District, which is all throughout the city. So we looked at all of those schools, and we also did the same assessment. We looked at how many fields they have. Those are public facilities, how many of what amenities those schools might offer. So we have a complete picture of what the recreation amenities potentially are here in Menifee. And then we moved on to trails. And I actually had to look at this map several times. When I went over it, I did actually approach Robert and say, okay, Robert, I can't find where the trails are. Everything here is proposed. So as we moved forward, this became a very specific item to review and look at, are all these trails in connection to all the parks? With that snapshot of what the city of Menifee has to offer its residents entirely within the city boundaries, we began the community participation and outreach process. We had stakeholder interviews, three community workshops, sports organization questionnaires. We had a telephone survey and an online survey. It started with our stakeholder interviews, asking important questions such as, what are the important issues from the community leaders? What are the important services that need to be looked at now and in the future? What does the city do best? What can they improve upon? And what is the vision for 2025 from the stakeholders? We also went out to the public. We had three community workshops, a month apart, and we invited everybody. Each workshop had a series of separate questions. And what we did is we provided that, in a much longer presentation, existing conditions of Menifee, what all of the resources were, what the conditions were. And we asked them individually what they thought of some of the specific elements, what the important community characteristics were. What are the issues and trends that might negatively impact those important community characteristics? We also asked them individually what role the city can play in supporting of the most important community characteristics. After they answered it individually, the community members then got together in a group, and they discussed it as a group. And as a group, they came up with their top responses. And then from there, we developed a consensus plan. And without going through each question, I'd just like to rattle off a couple of the responses we received during this workshop. Were the important community issues, the things that make Menifee a great place to live, work, and play, is, has open space, is rural community? It's a small-town atmosphere, it is an active, family-oriented community. Things that might negatively impact those wonderful characteristics are the over, potential for overdevelopment, communications and coordinations within the city, lack of sidewalks, bike lanes, trail connectivity. You might start to see some of this stuff repeat as I go through the presentation. But as we get to the end, all of those repetition items will start to make sense in our recommendations. And then lastly, there, the city's role is, from the community they had mentioned, that communication coordination is key, monitoring development, and park master planning, as well as potentially having a regional sports park, regional facilities. At our second workshop, we came right out and asked the residents, sports organization members, what is the best sports facility here? We also asked the opposite side of the coin, what is the worst sports facility here? What do the top sports facility needs? And what are the opportunities for meeting current and future needs, and the most important improvement to make here in Menifee? The same workshop format, same workshop process, asking the individuals to respond by their answers to each one of those questions, and then having them get together in a group, and then going through a group dialogue, coming up with the group consensus items, and then presenting that. These are, again, just a few of those comments that we received during the workshop. These were the consensus items, the top needs, a community pool, lights for fields, restroom, regional sports complex, soccer, multipurpose fields. Opportunities, where to upgrade city facilities, the existing facilities, potentially redesign them. Partnerships, joint-use relationships, build larger parks. And then most important improvement were lights, restrooms, and more regional parks, sports complexes. You already start to see a pattern in some of the terminology I'm using. And all of these words come directly from those community boards. I did not wordsmith anything, this was right out of the mouth of the workshop participants. The last workshop we had, in the community participation outreach process, we asked people to prioritize some of the facilities that we had heard, some of the programs that we have heard. And we presented, before we asked them to prioritize that, we presented all of the information we had gathered to this point. Phone survey, which we'll go through here in a little bit, as well as the information collected from the facilities analysis and all the tours that we conducted. What we heard from the community was the top recreation program needs were swimming, youth programs, and football. The top recreation facility needs, the brick-and-water buildings, was a regional sports complex, aquatics facility, open space, multi-use fields. Again, some more repetition in those terms. Now, when we went through the community participation, one of the other outreach tools that we had was a sports organization questionnaire. We went out to the eight sports organizations in the community, asked them a number of questions on a questionnaire, how many players they had, how often they play. So we had an accurate makeup of the sports teams that are using these sports facilities here in Menifee. The number of players, team sizes, seasons, turnovers, game turnovers. With that information, we combine it with our telephone survey, as well as all of the community outreach information, to continue to collect data, not just on the community workshops, but now in the sports organizations. And we take it a step further, then. The telephone survey. We conducted a telephone survey, as well as one of our outreach processes. And what we did, specifically when we do this telephone survey, we ask demographic information. So we can compare this, and I'll enlarge this slide here in just a minute. It, it does look a little daunting on the right-hand side. We ask the demographic makeup of all the households that we call. So that way, we can compare it to the existing census data of the state records, and see that we've actually got a representation of the city of Menifee residents. The important information we took out of that was critical, and part of our design recommendations. Is your population from 2000 to 2014 nearly doubled? That might not come to, as a surprise to you, but when I look at these numbers, these are staggering results. This is very critical information to look at. Your household composition is going up by .36. Now, I believe that's just the torso of a person, .36 is an odd, odd number there, but it is increasing. And then look at the median age from 2000 to 2013. It's dropped by six years. So you have larger households, younger families. We look at the percent changeover from 2000 to 2013. We found that there was an exponential growth in under five years, from 2,600 to 5,400, 104% increase. And then we look at the 20 to 24-year-old individuals, there was 180, almost 200% increase. Then we look at the senior population of 65 years and older, there was a 13.9% increase. Now, I'd like to qualify that, is that as a normal growth rate for senior population? We all get older. What we have here, these results show, a lot of the people moving in, your population explosion, is of young families. So we see that explosion in these numbers. The senior population is moving at a normal rate. Lastly, as part of our outreach efforts, we looked, had an online survey. The online survey was conducted during the public workshop process, in the month of May. It was advertised on the website, social media, and as well at the workshops. We had 616 valid responses for the online survey portions. And what I'd like to do is, as I go through just a few of the telephone survey questions, I'd like to also share the same questions on the online survey, so we can see some of the data comparisons side by side. The first question we asked was, facilities desired by Menifee residents. And what you can see there is, I've aggregated a couple of them. Pool mentions, the indoor recreation pool, pool nonspecific comments, competition pool. What we had was, we have 22% of the community that we polled, 22% were looking for pool facilities in Menifee as a desired element. 13%, again, aggregating all the trail comments, walk-jog trails, bike trails, having people want those elements, we've aggregated that on the side, is the next highest. 13% are looking for trail amenities here in Menifee, of the community particip- people that we had polled. We look at on the left-hand side of the screen, by the little computer screen there, 49% of the respondents on the online survey desired a new facility. And those facilities, top facilities that they desired were baseball, softball, trails, aquatics, and soccer fields.
Can I interject a question?
Yes, sir.
And I would encourage the council to do the same as we go through, because this is, you know, we're receiving the staff report, and I don't want to have to go back, ask you to go back through 30 slides. Why is there such a disparity, apparent disparity, between the telephonic survey and the online survey? When you take a look at the right-hand side of the slide, the water park is 11th on the list, but yet, on the online survey, it has it apparently i- in the top four. How do you account for that? I don't understand.
The difference, what we've seen, and we've come across historically, is with the telephone survey, I can ask the demographic information as part of my surveying process. And we can collect that information, identify it as part of the community. With online surveys, I don't, unlimited. I'm not available to, able to control the flow of data and verify all of it. What we did, as we go through it, you'll see a demographic shift of individuals who take online surveys, of people who utilize the computer surveys as a primary source. So I can't control who takes the survey and who doesn't. The phone survey is a random dial method, which helps guarantee that I get a wide net of the Menifee residents, it is the demographic of Menifee. The online survey, we received a spike in respondents on weekends. So typically after large announcements, social media announcements, you will see a different demographic. Now, we did ask the demographic questions on the online survey, a lot of people did not answer them, though. So I, I can't say that's a sample size of the Menifee residents. So the disparity between the two, it could be an age demographic answering more on the online survey. But because people did not provide me the age demographics on the online survey, I can't verify that. So I, I can't say the definite, the definitive discrepancy between the two was a generational thing, but that would be our, our history, what we've seen in several other projects. Because you do have a population who are more prompt to do it on their phone or on the computer.
And so, just to follow up, the, with respect to the online survey, was there a mechanism in place to prevent someone from putting a two or three surveys in? Secondarily, given what you just shared, do you attribute more validity to the telephonic survey versus the online? Would be, from a statistical gathering standpoint, I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
I do. I, to answer your question right off the bat, the second question, yes, the telephonic survey is something we can control, because it is a person-to-person conversation. We can control the data flow, and every survey that we collect is completed at 100%. Any partial surveys are thrown out, because they're not statistically reliable, then. It's partial data. With the online survey, we did have mechanisms to control the flow of data. We looked at IP addresses, we looked at repeats. So if one IP address had multiple submittals during one night, we looked at that as trying to stack the deck, so to speak. So we can't control that, but we can monitor it, and we can watch it. Now, I can't say it's a five-year-old or an 18-year-old at the computer, because they didn't answer the demographic questions on the online survey. But we did go through it, we had a number of much larger responses, but we had responses from areas as far away as Costa Mesa. So non-resident responses, we eliminated those. We stacked, we organized the online survey to verify as much as we could it came from residents. It came from Menis, Menifee residents, and that they were all within the Menifee, and it wasn't repeat IPs.
Okay. Before Mr. Lennox, let me ask, get Mr. Leesmeyer to ask his question.
Thanks for breaking the ice there, Mr. Mayor, I wanted, I did want to ask some questions. The, you were talking about the top sports during the polls.
Yes.
And what were the top sports?
Top sports during the workshops?
Yeah, wh- while you were doing your sampling, what, what kind of feedback were you getting?
Well, what we, what we had heard, and I'll kind of bounce back to those slides, is the sports organizations, there were two, two elements to that. The sports organizations we surveyed, there were identified early on in the process, such as the Menifee Little League, the Menifee Pony Baseball, Menifee ASA, the Senior Softball League, Valleywide Recreation Adolf, Slow Pitch Softball, AYSO, Menifee Youth Soccer League, Menifee American Youth Football and Cheer, were sent questionnaires, specifically when we collected data on those. But what we had seen through the community workshop participation process were comments on, go back to those here, specific field sizes. We heard a lot of baseball, we heard a lot of softball, we heard a lot of soccer concerns as well throughout those. And those were concerns from the qualitative side of the workshop process, of what people who came to the workshops wanted. So we didn't, we did have a prioritization list from those workshop participants of swimming, youth programs, and football as their top programs. But we also had facility needs as, from the participants, their prioritization is regional sports complex, aquatics, open space, multi-use fields. There were multiple mentions throughout those workshops on multi-use fields, on sports complexes, being able to have multiple-sized fields for multiple leagues. So there wasn't any one specific sport that rose to the top, but they were all recorded throughout the workshop process, and the appendices, as, as I like to have everything in there. Nothing gets left out. But as we go through that process, it's not just the workshop respondents I take the data from, but it's also the telephone survey, the online survey, and the sports organization leagues.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lennox?
Yeah, in all, in all fairness and honesty to RGM, they did advise against the validity on occasion of online surveys on the onset. It was part of our scope of work that we solicited to all the firms who bid on the project, simply because there is a tendency sometimes for community members to, to inform each other and bias each other's results in their surveys before they're taken. So one might fill out the, the survey online, and then they may call up their friend and say, hey, I just filled out, can you fill one out, too? And by the way, don't we just want all have a pool, or don't we all just want to have this or that? So that tendency does happen.
Thank you. Mr. Denver?
In your experience, did the residents of Menifee recognize that the state-of-the-art swimming pools just blocks to the north of the city of Menifee, which I believe are called Menifee Paris Aquatic Center? And the major baseball diamonds that are state-of-the-art that are next to those? Did they recognize those are usable by the citizens of Menifee? Do they even know about them?
As part of the workshop process, we led each individual workshop with a, sort of a presentation, not unlike what I'm doing here tonight, with where all those facilities are, and what those facilities contain. The drop zone was mentioned as one of the potential resources for Menifee residents.
Mr. Leesmeyer?
One more question on the, on the polling and the sampling.
Yes, sir.
When you, when you conducted some of the sampling and the surveys, did you have a way to gather information as to where in the community this was coming from? You know, as you know, our city's got four or five major demographic-type areas. We've got our senior core, we've got Quail Valley, we've got our rural area. And where I'm going with this is, I, I really would have thought there would have been more in here on equestrian uses, and equestrian facilities. And I'm getting the feeling that there wasn't a large outcry for equestrian facilities, especially because Rick is on the, on the club, so, you know, what can you tell me about that?
Equestrian did come up, to be honest, right out of the gate, it did come up. But our whole workshop process, our entire community outreach process is based on the entire community population. Rick did bring it up, too. The equestrian was mentioned, and it is actually identified in the document as being mentioned. being mentioned.
It's just, it's just such a really small part.
It is. It, it did not come up as much as the other elements, but it was mentioned. And it is taken into consideration in some regards, particularly to the trails and the trail guidelines and systems that we will be recommending towards the end of the presentation here. So it did come up, but it wasn't a, I'm going to say, a, a majority item that was identified in the summary here. Uh, as far as your other question, the telephone survey, we do collect a, I'm going to use the term, inter-monthable amount of data, quite a bit of data that is not presented in this report, it's presented in the appendix. So that way you can go back and look at that information. I do not have a demographic-specific breakdown by geography with me tonight, but that information can be pulled back out of the responses that we've collected and prepared in the appendix, which are the, the household size, the location, the zip code. So that way we can break it down and look at some of that information. That information is available in the appendix.
Mr. August?
Couple of questions. I did attend, uh, one of your meetings. That was my bald head in your picture right there, so. Remember that, I remember that. Um, and I, I just wanted to ask a couple of things. You may have to direct this, uh, to staff, but, uh, I realize that you did this, at least you, when you, when I did it, I went kind of as a representative in District One. So I think you kind of went around the cities and you got kind of a district view of things. And my question would be, and you can direct this to the staff if you want, is, is regarding the, yeah, re- a regional park, and also an arts and cultural center. That was my first choice, an event center, and that was on my wish list, if you remember a year ago or so. We all had our wish list. And, uh, surprisingly, in my group, nobody had mentioned anything like that. But I was looking forward to the day, maybe, and I'm going to time date myself or timestamp, maybe if a Beach Boys concert wants to come to town, or some other group like that wants to come, instead of having to go to Mecula to see a show like that, that's kind of what I was leaning on. So you could give me your thoughts on that. Was that of any interest? And then maybe, uh, we can bring Mr. Zimmerman's here tonight, and I know the college has big plans for something like that as well, and I think you're aware of that, Mr. Lennox. So you might want to say something about that.
I, I, I don't want to steal the thunder for the end of the presentation.
No.
It is in the end of the presentation.
Cause I know, I know you got some joint use recommendations. It's, it's substantial in the report, but he brings up a really good point with respect to that specific need. So I don't know if you want to address it, because he asked it now, or if you want to cover it later.
I'd, I'd actually like to cover it as we go through the presentation.
Okay, I agree.
But I will make a note specifically to address that one. Um, also, I, I grew up too, listening to the Beach Boys. There's no dating there. I, I enjoy their music still. But I, I do want to kind of hold that one because it did come up in the priorities. And I, but I want to show you how we got to those priority recommendations, because that is a, a specific point on how we arrive at those, uh, as is the equestrian, how we arrive at those recommendations as well. So if I may delay the answer to that one, unless Mr. Lennox would like to.
Let's roll.
With that, I'm going to talk, just very briefly, or catch up to where we were. We had talked about the, in, the specifics on the demographic information here. We talked about the online survey. We had six hundred sixteen valid responses. That was after we eliminated all of the repeats, all of the Costa Mesa input and people from outside of the community. Um, we had talked about the facilities most desired from the phone survey, and then programs most desired by, by Menifee residents. The phone survey, out of the community, we had found that dance, swimming, arts and crafts, as well as fitness were some of the higher response rates of desired programs by participants of the telephone survey. When we look at the online survey, we see swimming, softball, and classes for youth as eighty-seven percent of the respondents on the online survey were looking for. So you can see, again, some of those similarities with swimming being high up there in terms of programs. Now, what we had done is, we collected, just to, to pull some numbers here, we had twenty-seven stakeholders, we had almost a hundred participants throughout the workshops, we had three hundred participants in the phone survey, uh, representing several households, as well as six hundred sixteen online responses, not even counting the sports organization, we had over a thousand direct participants of this process. How we synthesize that data is very critical, because that information then leads into how many facilities you need. And we'll look at that number here in just a little bit. But we take all that information, the community input, the telephone survey, we combine that with the sports organization information, and then we compare those two to the facility inventory that we conducted very early on in the process. What you get is the far right-hand side of this graphic, two circles, which is your demand on one hand by the community, and then your inventory. When those two overlap, that is the demand you're meeting. Now, these circles don't represent Menifee. This is just a diagram. But when those two circles are on top of each other, you're meeting your demand. The further away they are, the less you're meeting your demand for the community. And what we've prepared, prepared is that exact DNA of Menifee. I can tell you now specifically, for Menifee, Menifee residents, the participants of these sports, of these facilities, per capita day, we've developed a al- an algorithm that allows us to identify, here in the blue box, the exact number of fields you have. Now, my statistical analyst is a, uh, very adamant on detail, so she puts in there point four fields. Now, you can't build point four field, but at some point, we have to say, okay, we're going to round up to five fields, or we're going to round down to four fields. With this, we're able to take on how many people you have playing sports, how many turnovers that sport will play on one field, what that field is designed for, and we simply run an equation across that, and we come up with the first line here, softball, organized youth, based on the part, based on the participants of that field, of that sport type, with the population count and the telephone survey, you need five point four fields. That data is specific, it is defensible, it is identified specifically on the Menifee residents. As we go down that list, you can see some of those numbers grow. Thought lots at twenty-five, soccer, organized youth at nineteen point six fields. What we do is we compare that information to the actual facilities you have. So you see there, highlighted in yellow, the city surplus or deficit, right next to this existing city facilities. So if we take that first line of organized youth, softball fields, the 2015 need, the need today is five point four fields. There are no existing city facilities, so you have a deficit of five point four. Now, we don't, we don't stop there. We continue on to the school facilities. We look at other facilities available as well, outside, within, uh, within the city boundaries, and we have found five, five facilities from other owned faci- other privately-owned facilities. And we have then, based on all of the facilities available within Menifee, within the city boundary, you only have point four deficit. So you are actually meeting, not with city facilities, but with other facilities, your need for that sport. Let me look at.
If I could add as well, these numbers incorporate not just city-owned facilities, these incorporate valley-wide facilities also.
Correct. What I want to do is I want to bounce down to soccer fields. When we go through this, we look at, uh, this number. Now, six stands out quite a bit, it looks like a lot. With, uh, the city's existing facilities at zero, you start to think about, okay, where are they playing? Well, the school facilities available are thirteen. So when we look at the school facilities, we start to think about the workshop participants and their identification of using joint use, of potentially having these joint use agreements with these school facilities to make sure that we capture those thirteen facilities. Other facilities available as well, out, not city-owned facilities, but other facilities are thirteen as well. And then you only, that nineteen deficit drops down to six point six. So these numbers become a little bit more manageable when we take into account not just city-owned facilities, but school facilities and valley-wide facilities. What we had done is we've prepared this plan based on specific needs of all of the facilities in one city, city of Menifee. Wherever that baseball field is, wherever that soccer field is, we counted those, and we identified those in these charts here. So when we look at how many facilities you need, we look at how many you have before we recommend going to build another one.
On the swimming pool section?
Yes.
What's the foot, in the other facilities column, what is the footnote number five?
Number five on that footnote, I'm actually going to refer into the document for that one, just because my eyes aren't good enough to, to read these. On the 2015 levels.
The, the reason why I'm asking is, I know, I know the line item says swimming pools, public, recreational, but there are several HOA facilities, there's the Sun City Civic Association Pool. There, there are a lot of pools in the city of Menifee, they're just not accessible to the public.
Correct. And we only count the public facilities.
All right.
As a, as a non-resident of one of those HOAs, you cannot utilize that pool.
Yet. I'm just kidding. I don't know.
That's not my report.
I don't know who was in the queue first. Uh, Mr. Denver?
So, it's not exactly correct that you included the swimming pool that's just a couple of blocks to the north of Menifee, as you might have put other facilities available. One, there's multiple swimming pools there, there's swimming lakes, there's, uh, all kinds of recreational facilities, and I guess you didn't include it in here at all.
The only facilities we included as far as the pools were public facilities. And as we, the number five, the footnote, is the closest aquatic facility is in Diamond Valley Lake Park.
That's simply not true.
Well, I, that, yeah, I, that's, I mean, I'm glad you're, I'm glad you clarified that. I mean, you got Diamond Valley Aquatic, but you also got the drop zone, so.
Why wouldn't you include the drop zone? And you know what? That's, that's a very good point. The drop zone being literally just outside the city border, when we did this study, we did it from city border in, whether it was valley-wide or city-owned facilities or school-owned facilities. And being that the drop zone was just outside the city border, on the north end, we looked at it from a standpoint of how far is a resident going to drive to an outside facility? So from the, I'm going to say, the center of Menifee north, we start to lose those participants. So it was not identified in this. But at that point, what we can do, because of this document, this document is meant to be a living, breathing document. It's meant to have coffee stains on it. It's meant to have handwritten notes in the margins. That identification there is we've simply identified on the pools here, for the pools, we have a need of one point five, 2015 levels, you need one point five pool. Well, that's fine. We look at that other facility column, we add another footnote to it and say drop zone, we're going to include that as one of our planning elements now. So then that takes that one down to a point five. When we look at 2035, that demand tends to grow. So then at that point, we can say, all right, including the drop zone now is a policy decision. We want to make sure that's handwritten here on the side, or I'm happy to include it in the document based on council direction. Then we look at, I'm going to move forward to 2035, as your population continues to grow. We took your population projection, and we see that recreation swimming pool going up to two point two.
Okay.
Needs. So then that starts to come into play again, and the, the location of the drop zone, you might take into account, maybe looking at recreation facilities on the south that have Menifee.
Mr. Lees-Meyer?
Take it back one slide, please.
Yes.
Zach, help me get my head around this. I, I, I think I see where this is going, but, um, with, with regards to the other facilities and, you know, the, the need to acquire joint use agreements, um, using the college facilities, um, I'm, I'm mildly concerned where this is going if, if we're banking on the use of those facilities as we develop our city's plan, because, you know, I, I think the mayor can probably help me out with this, being with his job in Moreno Valley School District. I, I don't know how feasible it is that we're going to get these agreements and be able to use these spaces on the campuses.
You're absolutely right. So we don't put all our eggs in one basket. As we go through the recommendations, we'll make multiple recommendations for one amen- one amenity, one element. You might not get that joint use agreement specifically, but we have to have a plan in place for capturing another element. So the benefit of this document is identifying that need, the need for, I'm just going to say at this point, one point five aquatic facilities. We know the drop zone exists, we can take that into account specifically on this and say we've almost, we've more than half met that need. But with the joint use agreements, we might not capture it. If a school does build an aquatic facility, we might not capture that. We have to have a plan in place for another location. Maybe it's a private-owned site, maybe it's another, uh, city specifically purchased site. So we do have recommendations, they're not all based on one element, but we can look at the facilities that are existing now to help ease the burden of having to build more facilities.
Certainly. Mr. Denver?
I'm a little confused. Um, I'm visualizing as we're speaking, the jogging path in the middle of the commercial area of Sun City of Menifee, uh, between the, well, in the center. And I think the parks are the, uh, Planning Commission has built numerous jogging and horse trails and all kinds of things, and I obviously don't understand, it says we have zero.
Part of the inventory process took into account the fact that even though some developments in the past have included, uh, trails, hiking, jogging, and others, uh, they have never been fully inventoried. With the exception.
Inventory, what's inventory mean?
Well, with the exception of what the Trails Committee, the early Trails Committee did, uh, mileage was not necessarily always accounted for. And so, a starting point of zero is the safest bet until we get a chance to go out and actually physically walk every single one of them.
So did I hear you say, so since you haven't calculated all the trails, which exist in Menifee, you're now saying that there's zero trails in Menifee?
We're, we're saying that zero is a safe assumption to start from, to, to identify a need.
How much did we pay for this study?
If I might help out before you answer the question. I understand Mr. Denver's question, and we built a Trails Plan, a Master Trails Plan into the General Plan, it's there. You, you've codified it in your presentation with all the dots, the blues, the reds, the greens, some connect, some don't. This, your presentation, this plan that staff is present, presenting, uh, run through the commission, that, this plan helps us connect those. And we want to avoid the, uh, trails to nowhere, which we do have some trails to nowhere on Marietta Road. I've mentioned it before from this dius, across from Sun Meadows, on the west side of Marietta, there's a beautiful housing development with a bridle path that goes a block. It goes a block to nowhere. No one will ever ride a horse there. So those are the things, by having this plan, we're trying to connect, if that helps out a little bit.
Except they might run there for now.
Well.
You're absolutely right. And when we start to look at that, as Robert starts to count the miles of the trails, those numbers can be added into this document and updated. But it doesn't change the need, the demand for the trails. We've identified the demand for the trails at twenty-three point four miles of walking, jogging trails. Now, that demand doesn't change, but as Robert counts the miles, that wasn't part of my scope, I'm happy to do it. But as Robert starts to count the miles, then he can adjust these columns and these numbers. So as part of this living document, you can start to adjust your, your deficit, your surplus or deficit of what those trails are. But going to the strength of the document, we did identify the Trails Plan that was put together by the Trails Committee to show that unification, combining the trails together under one trail guideline. And that's what the Master Plan recommends, is having a connectivity plan, not just having trails to nowhere.
And Mr. Johnson, I think he wants us to move along a little bit.
Um, thank you. I just wanted to also bring up that this is a master plan of facilities, like the General Plan, right? So we're going to identify basically everything in the kitchen sink. And so there's going to be needs upon needs upon needs that could maybe never be actually met. Um, but the process is to identify it.
Yep.
And to actually help us connect those dots, much like the Trail, that the Trails Committee did a phenomenal job, walking, connecting, identifying, um, areas for where trails should be and actually are, they're just maybe not marked or identified. And so they did that on the map. And then finally, I think what this really does when, when, when we get to the very end here, and, and you see the big picture, it gives us a vision for what the future's going to look like and what future sites could need. So when developers come in and we're reviewing park sites, we already have a list of those items that should be or could be included in those, in those facilities that they're going to deliver. What, what has been happening up until this point, and I believe up until the, this plan gets put into place, and again, it's a, it's an elastic document that continues to be flexible, is a, a developer would come in and propose what a park's going to look like. And what we've done in the past is we've reviewed that, we've thought it was great, we talk a little bit about it, and then it gets approved through the process of the Planning Commission. What this really does is it, it takes that to a kind of a higher level, and it starts identifying what things need to be in what areas to give everybody the same access to a wide variety of, um, exercise, athletic fields, a park, open space, to really create communities within communities and places, I think, I believe.
Well said.
So before you go on, just let me share, we're not, we, we have questions because this is our first. Um, I mean, we've, we've read the staff report, we've read the draft, Master Plan, it's a great document. We know there's recommendations coming, but like, much in the same ways the General Plan, we have a lot of questions. The Commission had questions, the community gave input. The commission had questions, the community gave input, so please bear with us as we ask our questions.
I'm happy to.
And we're going to take as much time as we need to tonight to get through our questions.
And I'm, I'm happy to be here.
Alright, thanks.
So, as we go through, please, by, by any means, even more questions as we do go through, but I am coming up to some of the recommendations, but before I get into them, I want to really capitalize on the 2015 surplus and deficit. Some of these numbers might seem big right now, and as we go through, once we get into the recommendations, and as you had pointed out, Mr. Denver, actually adding on those miles of trails, they start to drop. And then we take into consideration the number of existing projects that are currently out there, Spirit Park coming online, updating this document, so that has Spirit Park now in it. Those facility demands start to drop. The demand is there, but the deficit starts to drop, and you come closer to zero. So, I do have some, what I feel are exciting slides coming up that help articulate some of that information. The 2035, going back to some of our demand needs here, the 2035 projections that we've identified based on your population growth, we see those numbers starting to climb, and I've highlighted them on the right-hand side here in that blue box. You see the city surplus and deficit in yellow, again, again, same algorithm. We take the number of facilities, the existing facilities, we identify the city surplus and deficit based on that, but then we look at the school facilities and other facilities available, and the total facilities available number is then taken into account for the deficit. When you look at the soccer fields, again, at 28 fields, that number seems very high, but it drops down to 15 when you take into account all the other fields that are in existence out there. And this is just simply looking at the number of fields versus what you have. When we go into the recommendations, we'll see how to balance that equation and start to look at that information.
Ms. Sobeck?
Excuse me, I have a question on the soccer fields.
Yes.
Is there a way that you can put a footnote in there? Yes, we're using a lot of fields at the schools, they're not necessarily soccer fields, and I know you're counting them. A lot of those fields have divots, and they're, they're even, they're not straight, some, you know, they go downhill, and actually, when you're watching the kids play on the fields, there's an advantage at one end of the field because they go downhill. So, is there any way we can add a footnote, because even though we are using those and those are fields being used, they're not soccer fields, we could necessarily use more soccer fields that are real soccer fields. So, that's just a question.
Yes, I can absolutely include footnotes, and as part of the meeting tonight, any comments and direction we will include into the document. I have played on some of those fields growing up, a lot of them were at an angle, and gopher holes, not just gopher holes, but gophers.
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of, you know, ankles that get messed up because there's divots-
Absolutely.
And holes in those fields. So, that was just a concern, even though it does say we have soccer fields, we really don't, they're just fields being used for soccer fields.
Yes.
Thank you.
What we do, once we get all that data, we get the demand needs, I know how many facilities your community is looking at having, how many you need to fulfill that demand and that deficit. We go through and we look at all of the tools we used, and this is just a chart, it looks small right now, but I'll enlarge it here. All of the facilities that we heard are identified on the left-hand side. Whenever it was identified, whether it was in one workshop, all three workshops, the online survey, we identified it here on the left as a community response item. Up on the top, you see all of the tools we used, and I'm going to enlarge it here. We used the telephone survey, the demand needs analysis for current 2015 as well as projected 2035. And then we also had our workshops listed there, so all of our outreach identification tools are listed on the top. And what we do is we simply check the box, or in this case, put an X in it, when we hear something. So, for instance, that very first line, we had heard aquatics facilities, swimming pools, competitive pools, water parks, aquatic elements. We had heard them at Community Workshop Two, Community Workshop Three, as well as the program needs. We also heard it on the online survey and the stakeholder interviews. So, we identify every time we hear that, and we just add them up to identify some of these priority needs, because it came up in more tools than not. You will see two, two blue bars at the top, dark blue and light blue, there's a difference there. The quantitative tools that I use, the telephone survey and the demand needs analysis, that is a specific calculation based on your community demographics, are quantifiable tools. We count those as two. The tools on the right, the qualitative tools, we count as one. Those are the individual needs of a single member or of a group of members from the online survey, because I can't control those demographics, again, I can't statistically verify them. So, we count those as one. And what we have is six points on the qualitative, or six points on the quantitative and six points on the qualitative for a total score of 12. We simply count them up. We do that for every one of those items that we heard throughout the workshop process. And when I look at them, this is the hierarchy that they come up to. We see trails and biking coming up as 13 times through across all those tools. We see that as one of the community prioritized through all the tools that we utilized, highest priority facility need is that trails and biking. Now, you could aggregate the trails, walking, jogging, hiking sidewalks with it, but at this point, we didn't, we kept them separate, because there is a difference between the equestrian, again, trails, as well as the trails on-street and riding trails.
Mr. Leesmeyer?
Why, why aren't baseball fields and softball fields in the same bucket?
They could be, because they were mentioned separately. What I do is I try and preserve the division of these as best I can, so that way I'm not saying, oh, we can put all the fields on soccer, football, baseball, softball, all in one. I try and help keep them separate, because you can stripe baseball and softball together on the same one, but because they were identified separately throughout the workshop process in different elements, different tools, I kept them separate here. But you can see, those needs came out almost exactly the same, nine and nine. So, because of the facility type, when I do the recommendations, I know I can put two together, so I can meet two needs here with one field.
If, if they were grouped together, back on your previous slide-
Yes.
The aggregate there ends up being like 11 or 12. So, they're not, they're not really nine and nine.
They, they would still be highest priority facilities, exactly.
Okay.
Now, with the priority of this, I'm simply identifying the ones that came up the most. I'm not saying you can't build soccer fields until you build all the trails and biking. Simply identifying the ones that came up the most, so as we go through this, how often did you hear something? How often did this come up? I'm able to quantify that with this matrix, is simply identify how many times I'd heard it and in what tools. Was it the workshops? Was it the phone survey? Football, lighting of the sports fields, playgrounds, tot lots? How many times did these things come up? And that's simply what this list represents, is this would be the community's prioritization. How many times I heard it? I heard trails and biking 13 times. And that's all this is meant to represent, is those high ones. I don't discount any of the lower element ones, they're still listed in the report, and as opportunities present themselves, we will present recommendations for those.
I'm glad you shared that, because it put more, it puts more context in to how I read the staff report and the actual draft plan when, on the page where it had the highest and the, the highest priority facilities versus the high priority facility, it provides context as how you arrived at it. So, I appreciate you covering that with us.
And if I may, just take it a step further into that, there were comments such as shade trees. We did hear shade trees as we went through the process. We heard picnic as we went through the process. Those are all still identified in here, and we do take those into consideration. Nothing gets left off, and that's one of the strengths of this document, is we listen to everybody, we listen to everything, and there is no excluded item or community member. So, with this facility prioritization, what I do is I take into account the facility types, the facility designs, we look at the distribution. This is a map of the existing facilities as well as the planned facilities for the distribution of both city and valleywide parks. And you can see it's, it's sort of weighted on one side of the map. What we then do is we look at, okay, as we present, I'm going to go use baseball as an example. When we look at adding baseball fields, where are the existing baseball fields? How are they distributed throughout the facility? Not just parks, but where are the baseball fields? So, that way we can provide an equal distribution of the baseball fields throughout the city. We do that with every sport, we do that with the soccer, we do that with the football, with the practice, all the facilities, so that way we do have an equal representation across the city. So, when we look at the opportunity sites, you can see here, this, this map has a much more equal distribution. There is not just one side of, or north or south of the facilities, but you see a very unified one-city, one voice, one vision, city of Menifee recommendations. We, we look at privately owned property, we look at private future partnerships, joint use, as well as future city projects. So, again, going back to not putting all our eggs in one basket, we want to diversify as much as possible, to use an accounting term there, diversify all of our tools and recommendations, so that way, depending on the economic climate, depending on the joint use agreement opportunities, we can still fulfill some of those needs. And then finally here, I've just added the overlay of the existing parks, and you see how they fill in nicely, and you start to have a more complete citywide picture of all of the parks and recreation facilities, and how they start to combine and work together with the recommendations. Now, as we go through here, the final slides, I do want to start with some of the recommendations after, without showing all of those elements, where all the soccer fields are, where all the baseball fields are, I want to give you our recommendations and start with the existing park recommendations, the highest priorities, the high priorities, and then park-specific planning.
Mr. Denver?
On the last, on the slide before this, why is there a star outside of the city boundaries?
That one there was identified through the process and development of this report as a potential opportunity site. There was a parcel there that was discussed during the review of this draft, that there could be a potential parcel acquisition there, that could be an opportunity site up there. So, what I did was I took it in to account as it's an opportunity. Whether or not it works, pans out, such as the joint use, we've simply identified it as one of the potential opportunities. It is immediate, immediately adjacent, and that was something that was discussed during the development of this report.
Good point, because, I mean, if we're going to include that, we need to include the drop zone, we need to include Canyon Lake, we need to include the Diamond Valley recre- I mean, so I would rather, I think, it would, prudence dictates to me, and I'm only one voice of the five, that we not include any facility outside a map like this, except for the sake of discussion that those things do exist, we know that they're available to our residents. But when we talk about planning for the future and filling the need, meeting the demand, it's an opportunity, but it's, it's an opportunity that has a lot of challenges to it. So, that's a good question, I'm glad you asked. I mean, I understand where it's there. I, I know, I understand exactly which piece of property that is, it's been discussed, it was discussed with the commission, I know what it is, but I don't think it really belongs on this map either.
Okay, certainly. And, and it is taken just from that standpoint as, as an opportunity, one of many. And we can, we can absolutely modify this as, as we move forward. So, some of the recommendations, the, the final end of my presentations tonight, I want to start with what you have. Is taking what you have, this is just an example from one of the many pages in this document, of the existing park recommendations, Lyle Marsh Park, Nova Park, Rancho Ramona Park. There are deferred maintenance, there are maintenance conditions there that we saw throughout our review process of all the park facilities, areas that needed to be updated, areas that needed to be repaired, and we've identified these. So, as part of our recommendations, without letting these things sit and accumulate, we recommend taking care of these first and starting to develop, to repair some of these elements as you move forward with the existing park recommendations. Then we move on to the highest priorities and the high priorities, as, again, based on the community's recommendations, how many times we heard this through all our tools, we want to look at the trails, we want to look at soccer fields, baseball fields, how can we program in the tot lots, the community center, the multi-generational center, a performing arts center, a theater, going back to Mr. August's question, I made a special note here to identify, this is where it starts to come up, we did hear it a lot. We did hear it a number of times, and it made the high priority list, but everything else is in there too. So, I'm showing you where it did come forward. So, we look at some, where we can land the spaceship, so to speak, and how many opportunities we have to land that spaceship. And I want to start with the trails. I'm going to, I'm going to amend my recommendations as potentially updating the document with the known trail linkages that exist as a priority there, but also begin to enforce those standards, so that way developers don't just do trails to nowhere, that those trails throughout the development, you have a lot of developments going on now, do link to each other. They don't link from across the street, but they link on the same side of the street, that they follow the trail guidelines as already developed as part of the general plan, and they follow those trail standards, so that way this trail network can become a reality, can begin to be developed. And what we've identified here are a couple of those higher priorities, is the Edison Corridor was identified as a, a very good opportunity, a very good resource, it's that green line at the very top of the city there, it runs east to west, utilizing that, beginning the development of that trail network could also host as well equestrian trail networks up there on that one, because it's a very wide corridor. Develop the park connections, you see on the east and west of the 215 there, large squares, focusing trail developments in those areas, city trail developments, to connect those parks. Those parks are where there's the most concentration right now of existing park facilities. Begin to develop your trails around those existing facilities to knit the fabric together of the community. Use your existing resources to begin to knit those. Lastly, develop the crosstown connections. There are six connections across the 215. Those are a priority to make sure that the trail connections across, under, or over are preserved and any enhancements that happen from now on. You don't want to lose the opportunity to connect the east and the west trails. By building those, preserving those connections now along those crossings, you are able to then build connection, trail connections to those and create that fabric of one city, one unified trail network system. Any questions on the trails before I continue on? Another thing we looked at was the existing facilities, the facilities that are currently being planned for, that are currently being built, and I identified Spirit Park down there on the bottom, it was previously known as the Courts PA 31 tract with a number there. Now, it has a name and it is built and developed. And what you have there, this is, I apologize, a rather small chart, but you can see on that first column there, community building, there's one community building being planned for. There are 14 tot lots being planned for, so when we think back about the number of tot lots in that demand needs analysis, I'm going to refer to very quickly on the 2015 chart, the 2015 tot lot requirement was 29, and the city had a surplus of three. We're now building in 14, but when we look at the analysis as we go into 2035, there will be a requirement for more. What I've done is we've taken these into consideration as well as the joint use agreements. As we move forward, most of those parks will start to fill your demand, your deficits that you already have planning for, so you're moving forward in the right direction right now. But we also want to look at the recommendations as far as joint use. The Mount San Jacinto College has a plan that they've been working on, and they're adding soccer fields, a relocated baseball field, as well as practice, practice fields and football fields. As they're developing those, develop a joint use agreement with them. This is a potential opportunity, it is not the sole opportunity, but it is one of many opportunities to make sure we capture and utilize as we move forward. Other recommendations, we've looked at testing sites, all identified in the document as adding gymnasiums or community buildings with sizable square footage on empty parcels, some private, some joint, some city-owned parcels with parking lots, testing the ability to actually land the spaceship on those. Do you have the size of the, the lot capable that we're looking at? Here's an example of adding Clover Ball Field Complex with the parking required for it, restrooms, concessions, as well as soccer fields, seeing that they actually fit, and then we pair those into the document as an opportunity for capturing some field usage in that area. And then here's another recommendation, these are just samples out of the document here of, that's Evans Park, the potential to capture aquatic facilities, baseball facilities, basketball facilities. Again, these are just options to land the spaceship and start to meet the needs beyond the existing parks that are potential developer parks, which are also subject to economic conditions. Same thing with joint use, the joint use, whether the agreements can be secured or not. When we get down to it, I've gone through our recommendations, the joint use, as well as the new parks, the existing parks that are currently in progress, and I made a little chart here. So, okay, the 2015 surplus and deficit, you had 2.2 softball fields that you needed. Well, there are six existing facility plans that are coming online. We also have seven further recommendations. So, you're going to very much meet that need here in the, in the short-term future. Baseball fields for youth, 1.6 deficit in 2015. Again, six facilities are planned, further recommendations are seven. Soccer fields, there was 6.6 fields deficit as identified by the demand needs in 2015, but you have 12 soccer fields coming online on those facilities, that long chart here, I'm going to go back to it here. This chart here, you have several of those facilities in the future that are already in the works and coming online. So, we start to look at those and the development of those fields, and now, what I'm going to do is- to do is take it to 2035, looking all the way out, looking with what you have right now. We look at the soccer fields, you have a 17 field deficit, but with those facilities coming online at 12, adding other recommendations at two, we start to catch up to that 2035 deficit. Now, I'm going to say, my crystal ball does get fuzzy the further out I get. The 2015 is very accurate, but when we get to the 2035, we leave some wiggle room in there to look at this document as we go through, we add the drop zone on, we start to modify this document, we look at it, we live and breathe and grow with this document, flexible document, so that way it can be adjusted. So as, in 2035, if soccer goes the way of roller hockey, I'm a soccer fan, so I hope it doesn't, it goes the way of roller hockey, we can adjust these numbers and not overbuild and end up with facilities that we don't need. Lastly, how to proceed with this document, and, and I'm available for questions after this as well. The document is a living document. What it is designed and what it recommends is creating a single unified vision, a single city plan, consolidate all the efforts, the recommendations, and the programming under one agency, have the ability to change based on current economic climates. Should development in 2008 tanked? Should that happen, having all the developer parks, we want to look at our joint use agreements now for the existing facilities that are out there. Being able to maneuver with the multiple recommendations, the different options you have, and the different opportunity sites you have, to be able to adjust to the economic climates, as well as grant opportunities. Some grant opportunities require that you have community participation as part of the grant, you have a plan and a location and a cost estimate. This document starts to provide all that. So as grant opportunities come up, you're already ahead of the game. And then, joint use partnership agreements, I think I spoke about quite a bit. And then just careful progressive development, using this document as bonds are passed, as funds are collected, as other facilities come online, even private facilities. If there's another private aquatics that is built down in the south end, we might look at that and say, okay, based on the development plan, we're going to hold off on building a central aquatic facility because somebody else is going to take care of it on the south end of the town. The needs might be met that way. So using this document as a plan, a roadmap, and addressing all the future elements that come up around the city, you're able to maneuver here in the next five, 10, and 15 years.
Mr. Leesmeyer?
Yeah, Zachary, how do we, how do we change this document? I mean, it seems to me like there's been a lot of community input, a lot of polling, a lot of data, and for me, one of us, or even a committee, to, to start making changes, it, it seems almost one-sided. How do we, how do we do that and still meet the need of the community because it's not, without reaching out?
Well, a, a couple of things on that. It, it is the community, and the community does change. And as leaders of that community, you see that shift. So we always recommend that this document be revisited every five years by staff on have the existing park conditions, have all those new parks actually been built? Are we meeting that demand? Maybe we want to shift the needs in a different direction based on some of the community responses and community development. Roller hockey suddenly comes back, pickleball's a very growing sport. Assessing those as you go through it and looking at where they fell on this chart. There will be changes in, in the political climate and the economic climate as we move forward. So when you change this document, it really is meant to be a living document, it's handwritten, it's, it has notations in it. So you go back to the community and reassess through a, a phone survey or through community workshops to update this document. You don't have to go through the entire gamut again of all the facility condition assessments and looking through all the inventory elements, doing all of the surveys 100% again, but you go back and you do a, a presentation, not unlike we did today, of where all the baseball fields are, where the new fields are coming online, and you look at the demographic of your sports leagues and update it that way.
Mr. Denver?
I really like the idea that we're spending time working on this project. The idea of getting the community involved and figuring out what kinds of parks and recreation we need in our community is excellent, and I'm, I, I'm very much in favor of that effort. Has the city looked into certain portions of this in the sense that we have a sports park that we just created, and it has a great deal of troubles, fights, and people being hurt, and the way that other cities do sports parks is by a city employee there eight hours a day, and then they lock the gates afterwards. We've not found, to my knowledge, we've not found the money nor immediate necessity for doing that. If we were to put in a couple of small swimming, forget small, a couple of swimming pools in our town, we would have to put a city employee there, or three, who would take care of this park. Have we worked that out, that we have all those things in this calculation too?
Well, to simply address that, no. Those are future facilities that may or may not come online, so to prepare for that now would be a little ahead of the time. However, the skate park was always designed as a non-supervised park, and there are issues with that. There's also issues when you have a supervised park. So, really that was a grassroots movement to have that skate park in this town, and we're doing some CIP work now to try and make corrections of that. But, to say that a facility would come online and we wouldn't have issues with it or have to figure it out, I, I couldn't say that right now. Especially if we did have a swimming facility, and it was a city-owned facility, and we had city staff, yes, we would have to hire staff. However, you can also hire an outside company to, to, to come in and run that facility for you, which could or could not have it operate in a different financial way, and could have it operate with different hours, with different programming.
And we, we did approve two security enhancements tonight on the consent calendar at the skate park too, which have been, you know, long talked about and long thought out by staff, so appreciate you bringing those back. But that's a good point for the future, is that, you know, whether we have an aquatic facility, I'm interested in the definition of an aquatic facility, I know there's many, but as we go down this road and we implement this plan, hopefully, it's a roadmap for staff to achieve, and as those things happen and get developed, staffing and those types of things will be addressed at, at that time.
Mr. August?
Just two, two quick points, and I wanted to perhaps address what Mr. Leesmeyer said. I mentioned a regional park before, and I didn't see the regional park in here, but perhaps should the opportunity, and we all want a big regional park. That will in a sense change some of the, the numbers and the dynamics of your report. And I see that as long as we're moving towards 2035 and we're increasing the amount of open space in parks per thousand population, which right now is probably a little less than two acres per thousand. So as long as we're heading in that direction, and like you said, nobody can see what the future's going to bring, so everything, I agree with you, we can spill a cup of coffee on the report, and it is a breathing document, so that's, those are my comments. But if the regional park should come up, some things are going to change on that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And there were maybe a couple of questions I could answer there. We do have a definition of, of the pool in the document, at a 125 meter by 25 yard, we've classified that as a one pool facility.
Is that a, I think of a pool for high schools, Olympic-sized swimming pool for college students, high school students for competition, as opposed to a recreational-sized, well, this pool that you just described, what would that be?
That would be a competition pool.
Okay.
And then, I did hear the skate park come up, we did have recommendations on the skate park as well in the document for the existing conditions of that skate park. So we, we did try to cover as many bases as we could with it, but this document does, it identifies those needs of that aquatic facility, which will help you to look at, we now need to look at the aquatics facility. What does that mean? Do we have to stack it? What are the issues with it? And then you start to spend the planning dollars on that element without doing it ahead of time before you've identified the need. But with this document, you can change it, spill coffee on it, I know I started that, please don't spill too much so that the, the ink runs, but you can start to adjust it with the drop zone, you can start to maneuver through this document and use it as that roadmap. Any, any other questions?
Yes. Are you, are you concluded with your presentation?
I am concluded with my presentation. Menifee is, you really are primed to be the next model city. With the number of amenities, with your current parks that are designed, with the amenities that they have, you will quickly meet your needs, should development continue in this process. But it does need to be done with a carefully maintained guidelines such as the trails, ensuring that the development is done in such a manner that it promotes the city park and recreation.
Thank you very much, Zach. Councilwoman Sobek?
Since you're finished, I did want to just commend you on this report. It was so enjoyable to read this. It was, it was easy to read, it was enjoyable, it was thorough, and I think it's going to be a great asset to our city to have a comprehensive park plan. So, as being on the planning commission in the past, it's going to be very helpful. So, it was a great plan, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Maybe my, maybe my questions will spark some, so financially for staff, with the not-to-exceed clause of this contract, how do we do on it? I mean, I think it was what, 220? How are we doing? Were we under budget?
We were under budget, yes.
What do you mean were?
We, we are currently.
Okay, we are under, all right, got it, thank you. I read in the report, I read in the plan, the six, a six-year capital parks budget. What's the mechanism by which we review that, Mr. Johnson? Are we going to do it annually with the regular budget, or are we going to do it with the CIP?
Well, there's a pretty comprehensive CIP program budget that we enacted, I believe council approved last month in August.
Right.
So that was a part of this that we took out ahead of time, that we shared with council, and you approved, and I, it's an annual, so you get an annual update, it's an, it's an evolving, it's a five-year capital improvement program, just like, just like our other CIP program. So as we complete items, more items will come on, and as we move forward, we'll, we'll gather other items, and that's going to be an annual report.
Right, so at what point are we going to do that? Are we going to do it with the budget? Or are we going to have a separate workshop for the infrastructure CIP and for the parks CIP?
It's at the council's pleasure, I don't think we really know that at this point. Since we started in August, we'll probably have the first year concluding, we'll have a June report, probably to coincide with our next budget update and approval. However, as development picks up, you're going to have more money in the trails, regional parks, diff, which is a lot of where the CIP for the parks are coming from, which has allowed us to, to move rather quickly on most of our improvements in our parks.
Okay, thank you for that. I don't know really who this question's for, and then we're just going to ask it. There seems to be a lot, there was a lot of input, a lot of comment, a lot of mention in the report, the draft plan about arts, the arts and crafts, and where's the nexus to recreation? I mean, what am I missing? I'm trying to grasp my hands around a performing arts center, arts in the park, art design of facilities, what's, seems like that didn't have a lot of weight, but yet it's high on the priority list.
In, in terms of program recommendations or facility recommendations?
Yes, both.
I think that the programs drive the brick and mortar. When the program exists and there's a desire for the facility, we do have a program section and program recommendations in the document, and it does talk about a number of different programs that we've seen from our analysis of the existing programs here, as well as the phone survey, we ask people what programs they wanted. So, that information does exist, it is broad though, it's tied to a facility, a building of developing these programs within a, as you saw, I had that orange square there, testing a site for a gymnasium or community center, having that facility then based on these programs. So there is, in the document, and I apologize, it wasn't thoroughly scripted in the presentation tonight, there is a chapter four, the recreation program needs assessment, which identifies, same way I did the facilities, what programs are needed. And those programs would help drive the facility.
That's where I read it, I just wanted to hear he's, try to convince me that it needs to be a priority. I mean, we have, we have the Menifee Arts Council doing a great job, it's getting focus. I just wanted to hear from you or staff as to where it fits in the pecking order, in terms of programs or facilities. I saw in there a recommendation about, I, all the recommendations and the comments in there were consider, explore, expand, review, synthetic fields. We have to be careful, in my view, about synthetic fields, just from my own experience in public education. Public education, when synthetic fields were first on the market, it was the cool item to have. But as time has gone on, there are total cost of ownership issues with synthetic fields versus grass fields that no one anticipated. Synthetic fields have a high cost of maintenance, they're susceptible to vandalism, if you have to do patchwork on synthetic fields, you have wear and tear, you have sun damage, and you have a new piece, it just, it looks, and then you also have, there are health issues that are coming out, that are just now starting to materialize with the, the product. I mean, it's, it's rubberized, recycled tires and other things, there's, there's health issues that are starting to surface, as well as there seems to be some more injury-related issues with synthetic fields than grass. So, I get the fact that we want to be conservative, conservation-wise on water and whatnot, but you can't beat a grass field. Lower maintenance, it patches, it dies, it comes back, it's easy to maintain, and it mitigates a lot of those things that I just mentioned. So, I just wanted to bring that to my colleagues' attention as we consider this thing, and for staff, that we have to be mindful of those things. You answered my question on the aquatic facilities, sorry, I did this during the general plan, so please bear with me, this is how I think. With respect to aquatic facilities, whether it's a drop zone type thing or a competitive pool, it's no secret to us, that the drop zone is still operating in, in the red, and it probably will forever operate in the red. It's never going to recover the capital outlay, and maybe in 30 years it will. But, that's why I think joint use is very important with schools. Personal experience in the, my day job, I work in a school district that has four high schools, there's three swimming pools, and during the summer, that district runs a summer swim program that lasts seven weeks. It, the, the operational aspect of that operates in the black, it pays for staff, it pays for lifeguards, it pays for equipment, it doesn't pay for water, it doesn't pay for utilities, and it doesn't help recover the capital outlay that the taxpayers voted on a bond initiative to build the facility in the first place. So, when we, when we have visions about the future of aquatic facilities, we have to be mindful of those things. There, there is the economic concept of total cost of ownership. In terms of the regional park, I'm on board with the regional, I think that's a fantastic idea, we've all talked about it. I think we have Director Duarte from Valleywide in the office, in the council chamber tonight. You know, the wheat field complex is 40-plus acres. When we feel, when we talk about regional park, I think that's the size that we're talking about. And when you mentioned the Evans Park, or the Evans Road Craig property that the city owns, I think it's 20 acres, not all 20 acres is usable. So, when we think regional park, we think wheat field-sized, 40-acre-plus-type complex, that's what we're thinking of. And I think that the commission, the parks commission and staff's recommendation to seek, to acquire, I think we should. It's 2015, as time goes on, real estate values fluctuate, I think we should, and I thought we did, Mr. Johnson, didn't we give in our CIP infrastructure slash strategic vision at the end of that meeting? The council gave direction to staff to, to seek real estate acquisition for, for a city yard, be in a position to explore other properties and other purchases for the city. I, we've already given direction to the staff on that.
Yes, and our eyes are open and, and we're seeking.
Okay, great.
With the caveat that we'd have to come back for the, for the ultimate approval for the purchase.
Plus we have to have the money.
Well, that, yeah.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on this tonight?
Yes, we do.
Okay, we're not ready yet. Make sure I got all my questions answered. Does anybody else have any before we take public commenters? Okay, let's go ahead and take the first speaker then. Thank you, Zach. Thank you for taking our salvos.
Kathy Ryan, followed by Rita Branson.
Thank you, speakers, for being patient on, on the staff report and council questions, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am, my name's Kathy Ryan. I am the team manager for Menifee Barcelona FC soccer team, club soccer team. We are a U-17 boys soccer team. We practice at Audi Murphy Ranch, which thank you very much for taking that over and allowing us to participate in that facility. Soccer is an increasing sport. This last fall season between AYSO and Menifee U Soccer, there was close to 2,000 kids registered to play soccer, which is an increase of 15% over 2014. The demand for fields is very high. AYSO pays the school district upwards of $10,000 for the use of, it's a Bell Mountain and Menifee Middle School to use their fields. And as Councilmember Sobek had mentioned, they're not true fields. They are sloped and the injuries are high. My son has even gotten injured on those fields. My son has been playing soccer since he was four and a half years old here in Menifee. He's now 15. So, and I've been a team manager since he was young. I've been involved. And seeing that everything, all the families coming into the city and how the city is growing, the demand is getting higher and higher for fields. During the fall season from August to mid-November, if you go by Wheatfield, the real estate for practices there, for every blade of grass is huge. And they're, they're shoulder to shoulder and they're around the lights. So, the demand for fields with lights for practices is huge. The schools are allocated for the games with AYSO, but as we're under the Menifee U Soccer umbrella, we are not nationally backed. We are not regionally backed. We do not have the funds to go to the schools and pay for fields for our games. We have one field and that is Audi Murphy Ranch. So, I'm here to really encourage you. I'm glad to see that the proposals are there, but to really look at a regional park with soccer fields. And, and add a note, there at Audi Murphy, it would be highly encouraged that you put a net along that north side of the field. There have been so many soccer balls that have gone into traffic and one of these days, there is going to be an accident because of a soccer ball at those games. So, thank you very much for listening to me and good night.
Thank you very much for sharing. Next speaker, please.
Next is Rita Bronson, followed by Paige Lemus.
Hi, my name is Rita Bronson. I have been a resident of Menifee for 25 years. So, I've seen a lot of changes take place. My, and I noticed in Zach, I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name. He, when he was doing his report, it showed that there were eight parks that I guess is controlled by the city, by the Community Services Department, which is Menifee City. And then I noticed that 19 parks were under the control of Valleywide. And Valleywide's been around a long time. It was here. My, my kids played at the parks and had a lot to do with Valleywide. My concern is that a lot of my neighbors are confused about the city owning, being in control and owning some parks and Valleywide owning other parks. I think that I've seen our, my little community go in 2008, become a city. I know in 2013, the Department of Community Services was established. And my concern, my question is, I don't understand why we have these two entities running our parks. Why can't it all be under the control of our city? And not only control it, but control the budget so that, like I said, our city has grown. So, now we should be able to run our own parks and recreations department. So, like I said, speaking to my neighbors, they had no clue that there was a Valleywide and a Community Services Department. They thought everything was controlled by the city. And I know it's not. Valleywide has done a good job. I'm not against Valleywide and for a city. I just think that our city should have the opportunity to run the parks and recreations as well as control the budget that goes with it. So, thank you for allowing me a chance to express-
Thank you, Ms. Bronson. Appreciate your sharing and your input. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Paige Lemus.
Good evening. My name is Paige Lemus. I'm one of the senior residents here in Menifee. And I'm here along with one of my other friends that came to show support for local control. I'm piggybacking on what Rita has said. I agree that I think that the city would function better if we are locally controlled and along with the budget, have control there. Specifically, we've seen a lot about parks and recreation and all of that. I'm here because K. Siniseros Senior Center is part of Community Services Department. Therefore, I have a specific interest in having that be taken care of, along with all the other facilities that we have for our community. I want to make sure that what he said about the senior population is growing normally, whatever normally means. So, I did hear that and I want to say, yes, we're here in force. We are contributing to the budget through taxes, assessments, et cetera. I believe it's about 40% and it's going outside. I would like to see that come back inside so that we can better serve as the seniors and all the other residents of Menifee. I would like to see the unification. I think that it would be better for us to have local control and to be in control of our budget so that we can meet all of the needs, including the senior needs at K. Siniseros. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this matter tonight? All right, very good. It's not a public hearing, but given the amount of time and effort and money expended on this project, I wanted to ask. So, where are we at, staff? We're looking for, we've reviewed the Parks Recs, the Parks Trails Open Space and Recreation Master Plan as presented. So, I'm assuming that that's a receive and file and that you're looking for direction to return a future resolution at a future staff, council meeting to implement. Is that right?
That is correct. And staff recommendation includes that resolution identifying a method of adopting it, the plan as a background document to the general plan.
Okay, so it's a supplement to the general plan?
Correct.
Great, all right. Council, do you have any more questions before we ask for, I, I don't, do we need a motion on this or do we just need a consensus of bringing it back in the form of a resolution? Okay. Mr. Denver?
I assume that if we vote yes on this, that it'll, that a yes vote will include the corrections and/or updates of the plan.
That is correct. When it comes back as resolution, you will see those updates.
Ms. Sobek? Did you have, okay. Mr. Leesmeyer? I, I just want to, if you would, I really-
Please.
This is an exceptional document. When we, when we talk about good public policy and effective use of your tax dollars, I think this is a shining example of it. We did our general plan. We've done our economic development plan. We've done a capital improvement plan. We've put in ordinances that entice and enhance economic development. And now we have our first ever Parks Trails Open Space and Rec Master Plan before us tonight. I think this is what mature cities do. I'm really glad to be part of it. And I thank staff tremendously. I thank RJM Incorporated for the work that you did for putting together and all of the fantastic community input that, that came into this. I mean, that's the right way to do it, to present to us something that we can capture that input, have a plan for applicants that come and do projects in the city that can tie into the general plan and, and actually meet our needs, meet the demands. I just wanted to share that with everybody. I want to also say thank you and well done to the Parks, Recs and Trails Commission. Fantastic job. And we have four of those commissioners here tonight, four of the five. I want to thank you guys each for all the time and effort, all the site visits, all the field trips that you made, walking the trails, driving up to Marino Valley and looking at the, the Equestrian Trailhead. I mean, all of those things are fantastic. And again, just, it's good public policy. And I just want to thank everybody and my colleagues. It's really an exceptional work, work in progress. Thank you very much.
I'm excited about it.
Really exciting. So, with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Echoing all of your sentiments and very well said, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion that we have staff return with a resolution to adopt the city of Menifee Parks Trails Open Space Recreational Master Plan as a supplemental general plan, background document.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Sobek. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sobek?
Yes.
Councilmember Denver? Mayor Protam August?
Aye.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Again, well, now, thank you all for allowing your elected representatives to work this through. We really appreciate your patience. On to agenda item 12.3. Do we need a brief recess, staff, before we take this item or should, or should we go ahead and proceed? It's up, I mean-
It looks like maybe a few council members need to-
Well, I'm just asking. I'm good. I'm good. Yeah. All right, let's proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, item 12.3 will be brought to you by our Community Services Director, Robert Lennox, for the balance of the item.
Thank you, city manager, council and mayor. In the interest of the hour, I will go through this as expeditiously as possible. And I do want to highlight some very key accomplishments achieved by the Community Services Department in its first full five months of operation. As you know, the department was created back in 2013, but that was in a limited capacity for about a year, a little over a year. And then as of July 1st of 2015, that changed and the department had been operating all of the city-owned properties since then. So, this is just a highlight of some of the things that we've been able to accomplish, staff has been able to accomplish during that time. Quick, brief overview, we did go through a bit of a strategic plan at the beginning, very beginning of the department's establishment. And in short, the commission of the department is to enhance residents' quality of life and deliver quality programs, services and facilities that create lasting positive memories for youth, adults, seniors throughout the community. So, we, we cast a very wide net with the intention of serving everyone, all walks of life. We are members of CPRS, California Park and Recreation Society, and the National Recreation and Parks Association. We are currently looking into accreditation at the national level, which very few agencies in the state actually have, but is highly sought after. So, that's something we'll be looking to do in the next year. We do have seven main service areas, recreation, leisure activities, senior services, landscape and park maintenance, park development improvement, community outreach through our committees and commission, grants and scholarships, either through CDBG or others that we have applied for. And then also our signature special events, one of which you did experience this past weekend and of course, the weekends prior to that. And so, when it comes to the operation of city facilities, giving you a snapshot that excludes the general plan, I'm sorry, the general fund, this is purely just tax district dollars. About 2.1 million goes toward parks as well as right-of-way landscaping that are within the city boundaries. Now, this is not just west side of the freeway. There are, with the acceptance of LLMD 891C from the county and transition from public works over to community services as of November 1st, this incorporates territories on both sides of the freeway. In total, and, and there's an updated, couple of updated numbers here because two facilities have come online. One is Spirit Park, which brought our park total to nine. And another, on the Valleywide side, is Mahogany Creek, which brought their total to 20. In terms of right-of-way landscaping, there's about 2 million square feet of that. That is the responsibility of the city. There is more, obviously, within also the, the Valleywide territories as well. It's just a quick snapshot. I wouldn't expect you to read all this, but these are all the right-of-way areas, centers, parks that encompass the numbers that I, I showed you before. So, in terms of our first five months of operation, in terms of work orders that our maintenance team has been addressing, there's been a total of about 95% completion rate of work orders. You know, this number may seem high, but to be honest, that has a lot to do with the fact that we addressed a lot of deferred maintenance items coming in as of July 1. And so, lots to do and they did achieve a lot. And some of that has components of the CIP program. And some of it is just routine items that have been overlooked for several years, ever since even the county transitioned facilities over to the department or to the city.
Can I ask a question as we go?
Sure.
On the bottom of the slide, the, the data that's presented in terms of the financial, on the Valleywide piece, it's July 2014 to November 2014. On the city side, it's July 2015 to November 2015.
Correct. Yeah, they, we're trying to capture the same time block from year to year. So, it's five months from last July to November and then five months from this past, this most recent July to November.
Okay, so that's when, that's when we had contracted with Valleywide to perform services on the west side of-
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Correct, yes. And so, to your point, the financials here, they include all costs related to, in the case of the Valleywide contract, the base contract and then additional work contract. We attempted to do the same for an apples-to-apples comparison, our base landscape maintenance contract with a lot of the in-house repair work that our teams have done, our in-house team has done. It has cost us less. It does exclude the salaries, of course. And we did the same thing, though, on the Valleywide July 14 to November 14 side excluding salaries of city staff.
Did you eliminate Valleywide salaries?
Because the, the way their contract was established, it's all folded in as one. So, the, the bills and the invoices that we receive have everything together. It's turnkey operation in that case.
So, you don't know what their salaries are?
Correct. For recreation, some other great comparisons that have occurred. Attendance numbers have increased. As you can see, we've had an increase of about 53%, almost 54% in programs that are offered at Lazy Creek, K. Siniseros and through our contract classes. Contract classes weren't really offered in the prior year. This is a new endeavor and has brought in a lot of interest, as you saw even from the master plan study. Many folks want to see dance. They want to see arts and crafts. Those are things that have been starting in the last five months and have yielded some, some return. And so, even down on the rental side, this did occur in the prior year, although not to the scope that it has this year. By managing this, this endeavor in-house, we've been able to market the facilities better and control the, the cash flow and the quality control of people renting facilities. You know, the Palm Room at the K. Sinisero Center, picnic shelters on weekends. And in essence, we've been able to increase the revenue coming through as a result. One of the key components to the success, though, has been ease of access, right? Convenience for our residents. And so, we introduced, as you know, online component to manage all of the reservations, all of the registrations. As a result, you see that about 750 people, our transactions have occurred online and the balance of them have occurred, have occurred either here in City Hall or at our various sites in the field. So, in total, our gross revenues just on these components alone is just under $100,000 in only five months. Special events, as I mentioned, this past weekend was a great example. I had brought to this, to the council in the past, our outlife for events for the rest of the year and introduced you to some of the brands that we're trying to achieve. By doing marketing in-house, by delivering the signature events in-house, there's a lot more control over how these things can be delivered and create an identity. I used the three As in my example before, attaching residents to communities, attracting new residents and businesses and achieving economic stimulus. Signature events do all of those things. And a slot, the next slide will show you just how effective that's been in terms of costs, attendance and revenue. It is expensive to put on special events. In this, in this case, for the year, it's going to cost the city about $130,000 to, to put one on, to put on the program. We can offset that by some revenues generated from the events through sponsorships, through fees for service. But in essence, it really only provides a minimal cost- But in essence, it really only provides a minimal cost recovery. These are quality of life items, though. These are, these are place-making, creative place-making opportunities, right? They make people feel like this is a place to be, that this is my city. That's, that's what we want, because then they have ownership and they feel a part of something instead of traveling to neighboring cities to, excuse me, to have their recreation or their entertainment.
But you know, even though the cost recovery is only at 33%, you mentioned the quality of life aspect. We're delivering on services for taxpayers who have already been taxed.
Correct.
Right? So I mean, in that way, you have to look at it that way from a total cost and add the quality of life component of what these programs deliver.
Correct, yes. And typically, within the industry, special events, I've never seen in any city where they even get close to 50% cost recovery. This is, this is very normal.
Mr. Denver?
Is, I don't see in there, I'm sure they're in there, the costs that the households pay per year to the city, the county it was, and Valleywide it is. What, where are they, where's those numbers?
I assume you're referring to the special tax assessments on, that, that happens at the property tax level. That's not a fee-for-service provided through our department. The assessments that are collected by the city typically go majority toward maintenance, some programming. But everything on special events is a general fund item.
What I guess, I'm not being clear, what I'm saying is we collect X number of dollars from each household for maintenance, ARL for parks. And shouldn't we have a number of how much the parks cost us compared to that number?
You're saying a cost to deliver services and maintenance compared to what we collect? Yeah, so if you recall the very first slide, if we collect $2.1 million in special tax assessments, but the department's expenditure is, say, 1.5 million, then there should be a reserve. That's kind of what you're referring to, right? And I'm using arbitrary numbers, but.
I understand that. But if you take, let's just use your arbitrary numbers, then how do you calculate that we have a loss in there from the costs that we don't collect from the people at those events?
This is only at the special event level. It's showing you that the city, on average, for all events during the year, invest, invests $2.28 per capita for people who attend. That's what it means. The city has made a.
We can subtract that from that, the money we get from the households for the parks.
It is offset as a subsidy from either the general fund or special tax district.
We ought to get that information somewhere.
Mr. Johnson?
Not every household is actually, has an assessment for parks, landscape maintenance nor recreation programming on the west side of the freeway.
Right, but shouldn't we have that information?
I believe it's later in the slide, I believe it's later in the presentation.
I'm sorry.
Additionally, we've made some great progress on our capital improvement program. You have seen back in August, a plan, and this is obviously not legible because it's just representing what we presented in the past. But since then, we've been able to complete about six projects and we have another 15 that are underway with the plan expenditure of 1.1 million in 2015, 16. So good progress being made on that. You've seen a number of those projects come to fruition. And as the prior item, as Zach mentioned, there's a number of parks that are in progress right now. If we tallied them all up, they'd be about 234 acres of projects in some stage of the entitlement process, working drawings, map review. They're all in different stages, but it is not to say that, that, that all of these will be built, you know, in a year. It is to say that these are what is on the books right now and that the department's role has been to review those plans, the conceptual designs, working drawings, some of which obviously go to the Parks Commission and have been. That's just another layer of the work that's done by the department. Committee, community outreach has included the Park Recreation Trails Commission, Youth Advisory Committees, the Senior Advisory Committee and Menifee Citizens Advisory Committee for CDBG, a number of meetings that we've had this year, thus far, since July. And as a, as a grand total, to give you a larger snapshot, our revenues have increased by 23,000 over last year. The expense has also increased as a byproduct of having in-house operations, but the participation overall has gone up by another 20,000. I want to point out, that total on participation excludes special event participation. If you were to add that in, that'd be another 38,000 residents that come to the events. So it, it is pretty significant. What we did here is just did apples-to-apples programs at our facilities only, not special events, so that you could get a good comparison year over year. So as a result, the next step of this, the next natural progression would be to assess, how can this service be replicated throughout the city? So that all residents, whether they live on the east, east side or the west side, are experiencing the same benefit across the board. And so that the standard is the same for folks who, who expect a certain level and dependent upon, obviously, knowing that some of them pay a different assessment amount, depending on where they live and what district they're in. So as a result, staff embarked on a collection of information, starting back in March of 2014, and requested records from Valleywide Recreation and Park District, again on the July, July 1st and then again on October 16th, of all the engineering reports, all of the tax documentation formation documents, everything related to the Valleywide operations on the three LLMDs that they are responsible for. We have also asked for the help of web and associates to help analyze that data. And general over, a general picture of that includes three LLMDs that are currently managed by Valleywide, known as Menifee North, Menifee South and Menifee Parks, also called 88.1, LLMD 88.1. There are a total of 30 zones. At total build-out, it would be 13,700 dwelling units and the current build-out right now is 10,620. So not quite there yet, but that's the byproduct, we're still growing, there's more to come. And so that you can see, the dotted area is the city of Menifee's boundaries and the yellow area within the city is where Valleywide, and the red area is where Valleywide overlaps with the city. In total, the revenues collected by Valleywide for those three LLMD zones is about $3.7 million. And looking through and analyzing the financial documentation from Valleywide, that represents about 40% of their annual district revenue. By contrast, though, that is only 1.7% of the total district area. So what that means, so you can have a better picture, is that the district itself is about 536 square miles, whereas only about nine square miles of that is within the city of Menifee. And keep in mind, 40% of their revenue comes from Menifee taxpayers.
That's astonishing.
So in efforts to ensure or to investigate, how well could the city deliver these services if they so choose, if the council so choose to want to have it done in-house? We wanted to compare rates based off the engineering reports that were provided by Valleywide and compared to with what the city rates currently are as we maintain similar landscaping in our CSA's, our CFD's and within our LLMD. Here is the rate comparison across the board on the, on the work types or the work items that are listed in the various engineering reports. Overall, the city is lower in almost every area. Some are going to be the same as there's components of those engineering reports that are unknown. They don't provide enough detail, either due to the age of the report or to, due to the limited detail within it.
Mr. Denver?
Is there salary included in these numbers?
No, well, the salary is included, if you see on the line item of administrative expense, there is a salary component there. It's a flat amount of 15% of the total levy enrollment amount.
Does that include your salary or Rob's or anybody else's in the city?
No, it's only for direct costs.
So there's, so, and Valleywide does include their salaries?
It includes every, it is intended to include any employees that are working directly within those, those districts. So in our case, that would include park and landscape maintenance specialists who are on the ground doing inspections of the work done by either a routine mow and blow operator or irrigation repair, those sorts of things. And so when you apply numbers to those, ultimately, the difference here is that the Valleywide actual expenditure due to, when compared to the revenue collected, as I mentioned early, is 3.7. There is, even if they were to maximum, they were to do the maximum levy enrollment for all, all parcels that are, all dwelling units that are currently within those LLMDs, they are not fully built out. They, the max allowed would be 6.3 million, they only assessed 3.7 and that's what they spend. By comparison, the city could do the same service based off of our rates for 3.6 million, it's 2% less. I do want to draw attention, you'll see in Menifee North, there's, it's actually a little bit higher. And this is mostly due, in part, to the fact that the reporting provided does not identify line items for tree maintenance within the LLMDs. And so we took it upon ourselves to insert that because, because we know how important it is to ensure you have a good tree maintenance program. So once that's included, even after that's included, we're still, as a city operator, we're still 2% less across when you aggregate all three, all three LLMDs. Some of the challenges in keeping things the way they are include the fact that the right-of-ways and landscape right-of-way areas on the east side of the freeway are currently owned by the city. Even though the assessment collected goes to Valleywide and the maintenance done is done by Valleywide. That creates a liability because if something isn't repaired right, or if there's a break or there's something like that, the city is liable for it. City has to make sure it gets fixed. Additionally, Valleywide doesn't have an MS4 permit. Now, not all basins require it, but some deep basin work, creek work will require it and that's something that would be a concern continuing. There's, there's some uncertainty on the, on the expenditure of the tax dollars within the city boundaries. And looking at the financial documentation that Valleywide currently has, it's very difficult to see how the money's being spent and where specifically it's going. There is also a non-uniform maintenance standards across the city. If you go to La Lidera Park and you go to Discovery Park, you're going to see two very different parks. Now, the Community Services Department has worked very hard in the last year to raise the standard as high as possible with the funds available. And we believe that that standard is higher than what's happening on the other side of the freeway. To do what we propose would, would level it out and give the same service to all residents, whether they're on the east or the west side. The bifurcation of the agency, I believe a public commenter said earlier that a resident doesn't know which park belongs to whom. And so we get, we field several calls on weekly basis, asking about, hey, can you fix this, can you fix that? And more often than not, we have to tell them, unfortunately, that is not a city park, but we can refer you to the other agency to take care of that. Plan check comments, sometimes for parks that are within the Valleywide area, we saw this with a couple of projects in the last couple of months, their standards conflict with what the city standards are for landscaping and some building and safety standards, too. And so having it all together would normalize it, make it a little easier for our developers when they're submitting their plans. And finally, the Quimby and DIF payments, right now, we're still sort of sorting through what was approved on maps from much earlier at the county level, excuse me, and trying to ensure that there's a clear understanding with our developers about who they pay what to. That's a very difficult process, so normalizing it would make it one sort, one place.
Mr. Lees Meyer?
Can you give me an example of how the development standards differ between the two?
Sure, something as simple as a park furnishings. We have a standard for a cast steel furnishing that has lateral slats, whereas Valleywide has one that has a horizontal base plate or a seat plate, which we believe is prone to more damage from skaters using it as a truck stop. So that's a real simple thing, although damage comes usually after two weeks of it being installed. So using the city standard, in our opinion, would really discourage that because there are slats that skaters really don't like to put their boards on. It damages their boards. And so just to get, take you a little trip down memory lane, back in December of 2014, LAFCO, the regional, I'm sorry, the Riverside County Local Agency Formation Commission, was considering a sphere of influence review that was submitted by Valleywide to amend their sphere of influence to expand beyond the 215 freeway westward, almost to the, the other, the western city boundary. We, city staff did attend that and the commission ultimately decided to not grant that expansion in the Menifee areas. And instead, they recommended that the city do four things. One was to set up its own park and recreation operation, which did occur. Two is show a track record performance, which is part of what the report tonight is about. And then three, gain a concurrence from the city council on a desire to detach Valleywide from the city of Menifee. The fourth item is something that would come after the council has made that concurrence and submitting a detachment application. We would then sit down with Valleywide and work out a plan for transition if that's the desire of the council. And so tonight, just two recommendations, large recommendations. One is a receive and file on the mid-year report and two is just to provide direction to staff on, on a preference to proceed with a detachment application to LAFCO for the east side parks and landscape parkways. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Lennox, very thorough report and you seem to have captured all of the, well, great job. You captured the essence of everything, revenue, expenditure, program, delivery, et cetera. Are there questions of council for Mr. Lennox or staff? Do we have any public speakers?
Yes, we do.
Okay, call the first public speaker.
Kim Stern, followed by Matt Duarte.
Kim or Ken?
Okay, Kim Stern. If Kim Stern is not here, how about Matt Duarte, followed by Erica Tony.
Hello again, council. My name is Matthew Duarte. I'm a longtime Menifee resident and I currently serve as Vice President of the Board of Directors for Valleywide Recreation Park District. First, I'd like to address some issues I saw with the staff report here today and the issue of detachment. And then I'd like to make a suggestion as to how the council should proceed on this agenda item. The previous speaker talked about, felt like has been a blink of the eye. I felt like I was just up here addressing this body along with several other public commenters from the community when the council voted on four to one to approve a three-year contract with Valleywide. That was just last year. So a lot has changed in a very short amount of time. I do, however, understand that that's always been the direction that City Hall wanted to go. Mr. Lennox was hired before there were any parks for the city to manage. Mr. Johnson canceled the contract less than a year in, even though Valleywide had come in under budget. And I understand the report says that that was at the direction of the council. There was no official action from the council on that unless there was something that happened outside of a public meeting. But anyway, for, for gosh sakes, there's been hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on consultants to get the fancy reports like you've got here today. And, and that's not saying nothing to the, what, million plus spent on personnel just for the west side. And I apologize for my frankness, but the city, the city has spent all that money and all that time to come to a conclusion that they feel they're the most cost-efficient alternative, just is alarming to me. You know, I'm, I identify, I think, as a fiscal conservative and to see something like that from the government agency is, is concerning. But as to the staff report, you know, I'm naturally skeptical of any report that summarizes data without incorporating source documents, but particularly so when the report deliberately, deliberately omits context and in some cases, the most relevant information. For example, on page 604, the report compares expenditures between the agencies, but specifically excludes the city's personnel costs in the tabulation. That came up again today on a, what was supposed to be the same exact table, but was different in that it says exclude salaries. The actual report says exclude city salaries. Why the city salaries are excluded, I do not know. That's the entire point. If we're going to compare apples to apples and Valleywide salaries are included, the cities need to be included. The only reason I can see why they wouldn't be included was so that the number could come down. was so that the number could come down. You know, the other issue is, we don't have a staffing plan for the east side right now. There's none approved or even proposed. And keep in mind that in addition to the current personnel budget for the Community Services Department, there are currently, on the website right now, there are four more positions being advertised by the city, expected to total nearly $200,000 per year, positions that I didn't see on the initial staffing plan. Additionally, the staff report indicates that the fiscal impact to the city for detachment is only $15,000.
Mr. Duarte, your time is up.
Can you sum, wrap it up?
Absolutely. The city, the staff report says that the cost is only $15,000. I can say that, and the report recognizes that Valleywide owns and operates the east side parks. It is not going to be Valleywide's position that they're just going to walk away from those. There's been 25 years of investments. So, I think the city needs to understand the extent to which Valleywide will contend that it's lost. And if it goes to LAFCO, I think that's going to be a very compelling argument, and it's going to be fervently argued by Valleywide. And I think that the council needs to understand that. I guess, lastly, if I was just, if I was sitting in your position, and you're making this determination as to detachment, I think you need to know how much it's going to cost in personnel. I think you know how much it's going to cost the city as far as taking the properties from Valleywide. And frankly, I think this warrants, if not a public workshop with the council, a citywide vote as to whether this is what the community wants. So, I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Duarte. Appreciate your comments. Well taken. Next speaker, please.
Next is Erica Tony, followed by Christina Hernandez.
Good evening, Mr. Mann and city council members. I'd like to introduce myself as, I'm Erica Tony, and I'm probably one of your newest residents here in the city of Menifee. I've officially been here for 11 days now. When my husband and I started looking around Menifee to determine where we might possibly want to purchase our new home, we took time to look into the amenities here, and we chose a house on the, in the Otting Murphy community because of the amenities that were there. When going around the city and touring things, it's not consistent. It is unclear to your residents of who oversees what park, what amenities are at your parks for your services, and overall, who services those parks. I enjoy, I greatly enjoy being here with the city of Menifee. I'm actually coming from the city of Eastville, which is very similar to Menifee and what they're going through with their own district separation. As a resident, I can just say that I would prefer to see control stay within its city, and you contend your services with the Community Services Department.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Christina Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor Mann and members of the council. I come before you again. I came here last year when we were going through the decision between Valleywide and if the city was going to take on the department by themselves, starting right from then. And the Valleywide decision, I think, was one that needed to happen, just so the city could see what they were going to be getting versus what the city could offer now. So, we have that comparison. I think that was a very important decision. I've lived in this city the past 22 years as a west side resident, and I've seen it go through the county, through Valleywide, and now the Community Services Department. And I can tell you that the transparency that the city offers and being able for residents to come here and see the reports is very important, because we have questions all the time from residents. People are always concerned, well, what's going on with my tax dollars? Who operates what park? It's something I see all the time. People get confused on who's operating what areas, and I think it's important that our residents have one entity that's going to be covering city-wise, so that they know who they can go to and who's going to be managing their recreation. I think that's very important, because recreation is such an important aspect of our community. I think when you think of a community, you don't think of the shopping centers you go to, you don't think of the restaurants you go to, you think of the events you go to and the people that you communicate with at those events. And I think it's very important that we have, when you guys come to events, I think it's very important that the city residents see that our council members are also so invested in their city as well, as long as the city Community Services Department. As a resident, I can tell you what we want most out of our parks is safe parks, affordable programs, and individuals who care about the residents working in those programs. And from what I've heard with the public that I interact with daily, is that the Menifee Community Services Department is on par with the needs of those residents. And I hope that all Menifee residents can experience, soon, a unified department on both the west and the east side, so that they can meet all the needs of the residents together.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker?
There are no more speakers.
Thank you all very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Hearing none. We have received and filed a report. Thank you very kindly. We're on to the matter at hand on recommendation number two, providing direction. Where do we stand, council, on item number two? You can say, you can say whatever you want. Well, within reason. No, I'm just kidding. You have the floor, Mr. August.
I just wanted to address you, Mr. Duarte, because some of your comments were referenced to me. I remember the year ago you were talking about. I just want to let you know that, I want to, you know, when I was back with Mr. Edgerton and we discussed all this, I'm very, very aware of what we discuss and what we justify and so on and so forth. But, in that decision I'm going to make tonight, I remember some stated numbers that came in that were kind of not as the actual numbers that actually came into the city. And probably, where I'm going to go tonight is going to be based on unification and nothing against Valleywide. But, I do believe, and I always have, that unification, whether it would have been with Valleywide or with the city, would have been the best course for the city to go and provide the best service for the people in the city. But, I just want you to know, I understand and I feel where you're coming from on that. So, I just want to give you my opinions and any decisions I make tonight.
Mr. August, any other comments? Is there a motion on staff's recommendation? Mr. Leesmeyer?
I would move that we provide direction to staff and begin a process for detachment for detaching on the west side with LAFCO.
Very well. Is there a second on this motion?
Sorry, east side.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
We have a second on the motion for Mr. August. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Protem August?
Aye.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Well done to everybody. And I want to echo the same sentiment that Mr. August did. I know there's, there's no issue with delivery of service and quality of service with Valleywide. It's been in existence for a very long time. I reference back to the LAFCO review, the vote that LAFCO took on December 11th to deny a sphere of influence application by Valleywide to extend westward, and actually to, it was a unanimous vote to bring it back within the city. And we've answered that mail, we've demonstrated that we can, and hopefully, it may, it may come to a vote down the road, but that's part of the LAFCO process. I just wanted to share those thoughts with you, and I appreciate your comments. They're well taken. And you, you guys have provided great service in all your areas, and I think that this is just what cities do, is bring things in-house and reduce the bureaucracy, reduce levels of government, and deliver from a local control standpoint. Mr. Leesmeyer?
I might be a little bit out of order here, so tell me to shut up if I am.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it that directly. I'd be more diplomatic.
But, I would actually have to disagree. I would have to say that there has been some disparities with the service with Valleywide. There's been some delays in getting some parks open. There's been some real trouble working with the development community. So, I just wanted to share those thoughts as well. There have been some problems, and I'm hoping that divesting from Valleywide and taking more local control, we can have a better relationship with our development community and how our city is built, and not have to, you know, rely on somebody else doing that for us.
Good point. And I was talking more about program delivery, and your points are well taken. I agree with you. There have been some significant challenges, and the revenue disparity versus the total district area is really troublesome to me. So, with that being said, that agenda item's over. We've acted on it. We are on to city attorney reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, city manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. No other items.
No other items before us tonight. I was wondering, before we, before I ask for future agenda items from council members, can we do a little bit of housekeeping on the future agenda items? Mr. August had asked for an update on a water mandate from the governor as it affects the city of Menifee, and I think every community in the state is complying with that mandate. And so, is there still, I guess what I'm asking, is there still a need for this future agenda item, really? I mean, I'll defer to you guys. You guys still want it.
Let me, let me ask you this question. Do you think it would serve any purpose for someone from Eastern Municipal Water District to come in here and talk about what their future plans might be, how the city is reacting to the drought restrictions and requirements? What, I don't, I'm asking for your guidance.
Yeah, I think, I think so. And when you put it in that-
On a workshop or something?
When you put it in that context, yeah, absolutely. And I think we're working towards that anyway, aren't we? Staff had been working for that for the future.
So, just to make sure I'm clear, it's a presentation from EMWD, not a workshop item, and not a staff report-driven function.
I'm-
Update from EMWD.
Yeah. Do you remember the workshop we had in Sun City? That was a, that was a little while ago.
So, would you like a workshop, or would you like someone from EMWD to provide an update?
Let's ask the council, what do you think, Mayor?
My second would reflect just, just something as simple as the director coming and giving us an update.
15 minutes?
15 minutes, obviously, updated, what's going on?
I'm okay with that.
Would it be wait, would it be good to wait until after we see how the weather's going to go this winter with El Nino, and then have them come and give us an update after that point?
I don't think El Nino's going to have anything to do with the water-
With an update.
With the water problem.
I think that if we, if we didn't wait, we can certainly incorporate their projections based upon how the weather comes down. But, I'll tell you what, I'd like to use it as an excuse for them to come in here and tell us how great Area 9 is going to be when it gets sewed in Quail Valley, frankly, because they've already gone through the public hearing. There's an RFQ on the street for the construction. I think they've revised their construction estimate to begin in March. So, I would, it'd be nice to get a water presentation, the drought presentation, how we're doing, what impact on El Nino, and then they can maybe say, hey, guess what? We're about ready to construct the sewer in Area 9. Ooh-rah!
Okay.
Would that be okay, to get kind of an update from EMWD on all of those programs?
I have enough direction. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, thank you for allowing me to clarify. I just wanted to make sure, because it's been on there for some time. Okay. Future agenda items from council members? Mrs. Sobek, you had some from earlier.
Yes, I do. I have attended other meetings, as examples, school district and other council meetings. And as I've sat in the audience, I noticed that sometimes we get people to attend city council meeting that don't know that, the three-minute ruling. Some school districts, they'll read, they'll have a chair, which would be you, would read something like this. And I want to thank Sarah, our city clerk. She looked at some other things that other cities do. They do this same thing, where they read this. So, when a visitor comes and they're looking at us and they're wondering why we don't say anything, they understand that there's a rule. And I don't know, if you'd like me to read a couple of these? I just have two, if not, to give you my example.
That would be more appropriate if you got a second to actually bring that back as a decorum policy change, as examples, because right now, we do have it on the agenda.
But, but they actually-
I know. I understand. I'm in a district where they don't read it, but it's on their agenda, and it's posted in their chamber. I think it's really up to, you know, us as an agency as to whether we want to do that or not. I'm not, so is there, so is your, is your council agenda request to bring back a change in the decorum policy?
I guess that would be-
To modify our public speaker notes and to perhaps change the decorum policy to actually read it at the beginning of the meeting? Is that your agenda request?
I think that would make us more, more friendly, more engaged with the community.
Is there a second on that future agenda item?
Is there any way we can get any, I think we had done that at a previous time before I was on the council. But, is there any way that, would be nice to get some feedback from the people that always attend meetings. And I understand what councilwoman, Lisa, you're talking about for the person that's come up.
Well, before public comment, you read a little thing about the Brown Act. You say you have three minutes.
We can, I, my suggestion would be if, if Mr. Mayor, if you maybe like to try it and see if there's any benefit for it temporarily, and then make a decision on it.
I, it's not on the agenda, so what we need to do is have a second to put it on a future agenda to discuss it.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right. So, we have, we have an approval to bring that back, to consider a change in the decorum policy in the future with respect to public speakers, and whether or not we read a statement at the beginning.
But, you know, something that, if I could ask right now, Mr. Man, I'd like to ask Mr. Melting, has he had a feeling, a thought on that at all?
There's certainly no harm in exploring it as a practice and putting it out as information as a, as a verbal disclosure that happened at the beginning of a meeting or prior to the public comment. But ultimately, it's, it really is the council's prerogative about how it wants to amend the decorum policy, and I think it makes more sense to have a discussion about it when it comes back.
I agree.
I have one more.
Hang on a second. I think we have, do you gentlemen have-
Just a quick question.
A comment on this item?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Leesmeyer?
I've never filled out a speaker slip to speak. I mean, is it something as simple as just having a blurb on the speaker slip?
It is on, it is on a speaker slip.
Oh.
And it's on our agenda, and in eight years, it hasn't been an issue. No one's raised it. So, we can't discuss it any further. I'm getting the evil eye from the attorney. Mr. Den, Mr. Denver?
Just in a friendly thought, a friendly amendment would be if we just put three minutes on that, on that dais, when they stand up. There it is. Besides, it's on everything you guys just said.
Well, it's, it's been, it's been requested, it's been seconded. We'll bring it back for more detailed discussion. You still have the floor?
Okay. One other, just item that might be good to add to this as a discussion is, we, we know that our city council meetings are not televised. We, we heard tonight and read in the parks that communication was really important. I was wondering if we might be able to ask staff if they could explore maybe live stream that doesn't cost anything. We are in the age of computers, technology. Why couldn't we livestream our council meetings so people can see them? I don't know, just an idea for, to help transparency and communication, and maybe have staff look into it.
It's a great idea, so much so, we've already given direction on that. Mr. Johnson, where do we stand as a, can you provide a city manager update on those, on that issue that's been discussed several times?
Yes. So, we do have a PEG ordinance. It's going to take about a year to collect what we need to collect.
What's a PEG ordinance?
Public Educational Government Channel ordinance, where we collect a fee. That can only be used for really equipment or the production of a council meeting. However, this is a slight nuance difference. It would, it would probably be less of an upgrade on the camera and some audio equipment to carry the information via the internet, so that we could actually have it, a livestream via the internet, not on a TV channel. That would be the difference of the two. So, we're still going forward with the PEG ordinance, trying to figure out how that monies are collected. How long that's going to take is probably nine to 10 months before we can afford anything to go actually live onto, onto the TV. This would be a slight nuance, doing it via basically a webcam or via the internet.
Mr. Denver?
I don't care whether we do it on webcam or not. I don't want to take any money, though, from the effort to have the original thing that you're working on. That's what we need. And if this slows it down, or if this stops it, or if this, there's many more things that the people need in Menifee rather than this, this meeting. They need productions, they need all kinds of things that go on normal city websites. And that's what we need. We don't need just to have- We don't need just to have this meeting on. And I'm not against it as long as it's a, it doesn't slow down, stop, or cost anything that would come out of the money for that website or for the live production that the city would have. It's going to be a channel, probably a channel three. That's the way it should be.
So, is there a second to bring this back to consider live streaming, which is a change in direction from previous council action to broadcast it on TV, which has already been put in place?
Not necessarily a change, but maybe to have staff look into it if it didn't cost to come back to us, to look into the technology, to see what's available.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second it. Do you want to second it, Mr. Lees?
Whatever, I can second.
All right. Very well. Do you have enough direction on that agenda item?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Any other future agenda requests? Hearing none. We are adjourned for the year. We'll see you in 2016.